This meeting the order of special work session of the members forward. That said, adding it right off to Rachel. Jill, do we have anybody participating by Zoom? Okay, so we don't have any public viewing us yet.
Right. Thank you very much Chairwoman Reedman and members of the board. Tonight, I do want to give you a brief introduction to the K-12 vaccination mandate. There are many moving parts to this that impact, as you can imagine, every person in the organization and many affiliated with the organization. So tonight is step one to provide you with some basic information and there will be more to come. Rachel, before you start, Steve, can I ask you to do the Zoom on yours so they can see what she's sharing right now? I think you just had your report up. If you go back to the Zoom, you'll see her sharing her screen.
There we go. Oh, well, I've got a... I can see it.
Yeah.
But I, you're viewing... But I thought I have to stop my share?
Yes.
Should have practiced beforehand. It's all good.
Hopefully, I can reduplicate what I just did, but I had to turn my PowerPoint off.
Okay. All right.
But we figured out.
So these slides are taken from a presentation that I attended on August 26th. And I'll just get right to the point. I, there were about 30 slides and I chose the ones that were most pertinent to this evening. You'll see that on July 25th, this is where Oregon was as far as the spread of the Delta variant. And a month later, this is where we are for Oregon and the nation. I was very interested in this particular slide that was shared because this is an Oregon slide. This is not a national slide. And if you look, you will see that there is definitely an upward trend going on. And again, you can, you could make comparisons to what happened a year ago in November. However, that was not the Delta variant. And so we're talking a very, about a very different beast this time around. This slide is particularly impactful, I believe, because it gives a good visual about how important it is to layer up and put all kinds of defenses in place against the virus. You'll see many things that we had in place last year, including entry screening, face coverings, physical distancing, cohorting, and so on. And at the very end, you'll see that we've got vaccinations. And when you put all of these together, this is our best defense against the spread of the disease. Many people have had questions, number one, which is why? Why are we doing this? Why is it the schools that are doing this? And I think it's important to realize that no matter how frustrating this may be for folks or how political people may view this, the very top reason for this is the one at the top of this slide, which is that we are trying to keep school in person and open five days a week, full days. We don't want to go back to where we were a year ago at this time. And while this is terribly inconvenient, frustrating, whatever you want to call it, it still doesn't compare to how brutal last year was in terms of the impact of having schools closed. So that is reason number one. And two, two primary reasons below that, most people in the schools are unvaccinated because we're including the children in that. And just as important is ensuring that all adults around our students are fully vaccinated against COVID-19. So they are safe and they are able to reliably provide that in-person instruction. If we don't have the backbone of our organization safeguarded, we can't keep having in-person instruction for our students. Sorry for the small print here. This is why you have a hard copy for you in front of you. The vaccination requirement goes into effect August 18th. But it's important to note that if people want to follow this requirement, meet the deadline between both, both immunizations and that 14-day wait afterward. They need to have their shot by September 6th. That would meet the deadline. Teachers, school staff, and volunteers may not teach, work, learn, study, assist, observe, or volunteer at a school unless they're fully vaccinated or have provided documentation of a medical or religious exemption or exception, excuse me. A school may not employ, contract with, or accept the volunteer services of teacher, school staff, or volunteers who are teaching, working, learning, studying, assisting, observing, or volunteering at a school unless the teachers or school staff are fully vaccinated against COVID-19 or have a documented medical or religious exception. This does include coaches, it includes referees, it includes volunteer coaches. And then finally, this is also true for school-based program staff and volunteers. So here is the very basic essence of the requirement. Schools that grant an exception to the vaccination requirement under Section 4 of this rule must take reasonable steps to ensure that unvaccinated teachers, school staff, and volunteers are protected from contracting and spreading COVID-19. For those that may receive an approval of their, their submission of their, their request, there might be weekly testing, fitted N95 masks, additional physical distancing, and/or an isolated work site. And that is the end of my presentation and I am happy to entertain questions.
Rachel, I know John had asked this question at our last board meeting. So does this apply to school board members as well? Do we know the answer to that?
Yes, we do have an answer to that and it does not impact school board members. Other questions I might be able to answer this evening. There will be more information coming.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Right, let Steve get back up and running with his PowerPoint.
10 second question is... To be shared now.
No, there's no one else there though.
That was gonna be my next question, but we'll try.
There it is? Yep.
Oh yeah, there it is. Okay. Quick before it goes away. There's there. All right, super. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me back. I see we got a couple of new faces. And so what I'd like to do is some quick introductions. And if you would, just give me your name and your day job, because I'm always interested in what you do during the day. Because I know how you're gonna spend a lot of your nights. It's gonna be right here in this room and several different rooms. But then kind of kick us off and you have this definition on your agenda. And we'll go over that agenda in just a moment. But actually introduce yourself. What I'd like you to do is look at that definition and tell me what part of that definition is a strength for this board? Doesn't mean it's perfect, doesn't mean it can't improve. But when you read through that statement, what piece of it just really, for as little or as long as you've been on the board, what really resonates with you as a strength of this board? And then just very quickly, why? I don't want to spend a ton of time here, but I want to celebrate your strengths. And Rachel, I'm actually gonna start with you. So I'm gonna tell you that, so I'll give you 30 seconds to think of your answer because then I'm gonna finish up with Jill, because I'm not letting Jill off the hook. But I thought I better not start with Jill. That might make her mad and I'm not gonna do that. Now Rachel, on the other hand, you know.
I'm ready.
There you go. All right, so.
So I'm the superintendent, Rachel Stuckey. And I, while I see all of these things, what has really surfaced very quickly and has resonated with me in my work with everyone around the, the table here has been collective responsibility. It is so clear to me that everyone is child-focused and intent on what is doing right for our students.
Thank you very much. And your day job is also your night job and your 24/7 job, absolutely. And let's see, we're almost at the end of August, so two months?
It's been eight weeks.
Eight weeks. There we go. Mark?
So I, I focused there on the student learning. He said that I think that's something that this group is pushing for. It's getting students back in the classrooms, given everything that's happened in the last almost two years. I think that's what I see as a big focus of our, our board here.
Super. And Mark, what do you do during the day?
I take care of the kids during the day.
Right, thank you. And you've been on the board since June?
June.
You were elected in May and you were sworn in in July.
I thought, I thought that was a new face behind the mask there. I just wanted to make sure.
We put him to work sooner than that.
I, I'm sure.
Officially July, yeah.
Understand. Sure.
I'm Sheri Reedman and I've been on the board. It's been a while.
You can ballpark it.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And during the day, so my day job, I've got a couple. For pay, I work for Clackamas County Human Resources. And on a volunteer basis, I do all the bookwork and payroll for my husband's residential construction company, amongst other things.
Of course. Of course.
And our strength, I think trust and respect just pop out of me. This board is wonderful at those two and strengths with the shared focus on student learning. I agree with that as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Teresa. This is my third year on the school board. My day job, well, I'm retired, so I can do whatever I want.
I aspire to be.
I do have days that, you know, a couple of days a week that I'm watching grandchildren, which is, you know, the best thing I can do. And I am available when the school year starts to, to sub now and then. Just, you know, maybe once a week or twice a week at the most, but if they need me, but just here in Mount Angel, so.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and I didn't say, everybody was kind of hit, but the two words, just like Sheri, the first thing I underlined in this was that trust and respect. And then along with that shared focus on student learning, those are what I feel in this group, so.
Thank you very much.
Andrea Fow, this is my eighth week as well. I am a K-5 PE teacher in Selma-Kaiser. From my day job and my words were shared focus on student learning for the board.
Thank you very much. And I'm John Conklin, I'm retired. And regardless of what they tell you, it is much better than they told you.
Now you're just, now you're just toying with John.
We're toying with later.
And the, I'm gonna jump in this thing and give you a couple of pieces. But in this definition, I, what I really am most grateful, proud of is that we are effective partners so far and have been in the two years previous. And that we have a shared focus and that the responsibility is collective. I have been on teams where we had partnerships, but they weren't effective and they were by definition only. We had a focus, but people didn't honestly really share it by depth, by requirement we had to, but it wasn't really happening. And we, we hold each other, I think, we admire, I don't know, admire, but I'm gonna use the word admire. Admire, respect, give credence to the other person, but gift ourselves into the process. I, I, I just remarkable, remarkable. Thank you very much. Jill?
I'm Jill, Board Secretary, day and night job. And I think that what jumped out at me first of all, we thought this group definitely effective partnerships. I, I think, been doing this for a few years now, so I've been through handful of board members at this point. But I think this group especially always seems willing to learn so that they can lead better together, so.
Thank you very much. And for those of you that don't know, I'm Steve Kelly. I'm the Director of Board Development, Executive Searcher for OSBA. I'm starting my seventh year in a previous life. I was superintendent, I've been assistant superintendent, I've been in education going on 40 years since the late 30s, I lose count there. But to my retired brethren, my wife and I have been having that conversation recently. And as much as I love my job and, and I do, yeah, I could see being retired for the first time in my career. You know, it's like, yeah, I, I might be able to do this. And I don't know if it's been working from home or the pandemic or what's, you know, been the catalyst for that conversation, but yeah, I aspire to be one day. To me, two things jumped out from the, when I know about this board, both by reputation and when we're working with you, trust and respect bubble to the top for me. In all my dealings with this board, even in, I don't even want to say controversy, but in, in conflict or interacting with one another, there was always that underlying trust and respect. And over the years, your dedication of learning together as a board so that you can lead more effectively, whether it's training like this or other training that you done with OSBA. For some of you, I've seen you at our other events, like summer board and convention. I mean, it takes a real commitment to be a board member. It's really a lifetime kind of, it's kind of what they say about the game of golf, which I took up during the pandemic, you know? It takes a lifetime to even come close to learn how to play the game with any proficiency. I think it's the same thing with the school board. All right, thank you very much for that. That really helps me connect, especially for the newer folks in the crowd. So I'm gonna come back to the PowerPoint, so I'm gonna stop it here. And we'll come back to this. So I want you to focus on your agenda for a moment. And look at number one. Those are the objectives for our transition program. I know you've talked about the evaluation process. I'm gonna bring us back there just briefly to see if there's anything that we need to talk about or clarify expectations. I've seen that it's in your board operating agreement. We're gonna come back to that tonight as well, just to see if there's any loose ends there that we need to tie up. Communication parameters, I'm gonna ask you very briefly, what's working since that conversation? Really want to focus on your strengths? Is there anything that can improve? And then really our task for tonight is to talk about roles and responsibilities. And so I was gonna come back to the PowerPoint in 30 minutes or so, once we've covered some of the other objectives. But in the transition program, we're very committed to building a strong leadership team. And one of those partnerships that John alluded to, that you saw in the definition, is the board as a whole and to some degree individually, in partnership with your superintendent. And that's what we're gonna talk about tonight, the roles and responsibility, the evaluation process, the communication. I mean, a lot of this transition program is focused, focused on new superintendent, board, and starting that relationship out the right way. There's two other levels of partnership. The other is the board's partnership with one another. Because unlike other elected officials, the research is pretty clear that your ability to work together is key in terms of positively impacting student achievement. Now, when I say work together, that's not a synonym for always agreeing or all having the same perspective. Because the research is also pretty clear there, that in different perspectives, a conversation coming from multiple perspectives is what strengthens you, not weakens you. We've done it the right way and that right way is in an environment of trust and respect. So that entire definition, we could unpack for hours, but I'll come back to it here or there. But those are the partnerships, it's two of the three partnerships, I almost forgot the third. And that's with your community, the board slash superintendent and your relationship, your partnership with the community. All right, so with that, let's talk a little bit about the superintendent evaluation. I know Sarah was here before. You've kind of talked through your process. And, but I think what was in question tonight was the evaluation timeline. That there were some questions there or even just making sure that we're all on the same page. Now, Rachel, I copied the one that you attached to the email. There was another one in your folder that was slightly different, but I thought I would start with this one, Rachel, because this is the one that you sent to me. They're both very similar. And Rachel, I don't know if you wanted, or Sheri, if you wanted to walk us through this or if you wanted me to do that, or what the questions might be around this that may have arisen since the last time my colleague was here. So if there's no specific questions, I'll walk you through it. But if there are, I'd like to start with your specific question.
I appreciated how Sarah, like, or whoever, assuming it was Sarah, like laid out when we're gonna meet an executive session for progress. Just check-ins on progress with Rachel, which I think is really important and we agreed that's helpful. So we're, you know, just to highlight those for you all, executive session on the 13th of September, the 8th of November, and the 10th of January. And typically, we do executive session at 6:00, the same night as a regular board meeting. So that's something for you all to calendar in for yourselves. And then the timing looks fine because of all that executive session, looks like it will happen on the 17th of February.
And Sheri, just before you go on, let, let me just piggyback on what you're saying. 9:13, 11:08, and 1:10. In my opinion, are the most critical dates on your calendar for a brand-new superintendent and two new board members. And really, in almost any situation, that conversation, feedback, yes, it can happen in executive session. You need to have those good, honest conversations early. And I'm sure Sheri, or Sheri, I'm sure Sarah emphasized this, but I don't know a single superintendent worth their salt that doesn't want the feedback. So you can come with, and, and the check-in is different than what we're gonna walk through in just a moment with Sheri. That's why I stopped you for just a second. It's informal. It's not a lot of work ahead of time, coming together with one voice, because you don't really have time for that. It's intended to be, if we were in executive session right now, just kind of going around the horns. And, you know, first of all, what are the strengths? What are the good things that you see? Because we don't want it to be all just constructive criticism. And individual board members just speak their mind. And sometimes you'll have board members see it differently, you know, around a constructive criticism. Teresa might say X and John say, well, I don't really see it that way. I think it's Y. And that's okay, that's all right. So it's informal feedback. It's critical, in my opinion. The only reason I'm stressing this so much is because I find way too many boards skip it. So please don't, please harangue them to give you the feedback. Just really, really important every year, but especially in the first year.
And I would also add, Steve, that this is the first year. And in the second year, we may decide that we only need to do this once every four months instead of, or, or three or whatever. I mean, we don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. Or stick with the same schedule.
Exactly. You can change it up.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wouldn't go less than two before the evaluation.
Yeah.
But anyway, just, these are very important. I wish I had that when I was a superintendent, I had to harangue my board just to do the evaluation. They were a bit more hands-off and I, like, great board, don't get me wrong. They were very hands-on before I got there, but they kind of went a little too far the other way. But anyway, sorry, continue Sheri. I just wanted to emphasize the check-in, super important.
And then this, the date here is February 10th, where the evaluation documents sent to the board and superintendent to be completed and returned to the board secretary. So we have a Survey Monkey tool that normally is what we use. I would say this February 10th is a little late. I would have this go out, the survey go out early, like late January, mid to late January.
Let's, let's put a date in there.
And because we want the results compiled and ready in time for executive session on the 17th. So that, and lots of times we need reminders. My experience with board members is that we need reminders and we typically need longer than what we think. So, so say a deadline of February 1st for that survey, that gives us like a week to, to remind people, which as board chair I can do. So I would say if we want the survey completed and we also open it up to administrators and district staff as well.
And so you need time to do that. So I'm not even sure, well, that's 10 additional days. But I would, I would encourage you, let's find a date, let's put it in there because at an upcoming board meeting, you should approve this by motion. So everybody knows what page you're working on.
Let's just see when would make sense.
So two weeks earlier would be what?
Two weeks earlier would be January 27th.
So that gives you three full weeks. And if you're ready to go and you've got the surveys and Jill, I'm looking to Jill, because I think you managed this probably, is that enough time to do what Sheri described?
I think, well, Eva does that, but I, I mean, it seems like plenty of time, right?
Yeah. I would say maybe even send the survey out, let's say January 25th, it's Tuesday. With the, and the deadline to Ava would be the 30th or, or even the, let's see, if it's, if we do it, give us a week, so like February 3rd would be the deadline. And that gives, that gives us time to remind one another to get it done.
And so if it's due by February 3rd, that gives someone, I'm assuming Jill, to compile everything to present to the board on the 17th. If we're still sticking with the 17th, good. This is exactly what we need to do. Jill, did you catch those changes?
I like that better. Does any, does anybody have better ideas?
That's good.
All right, Sheri, you're doing a great job. I'm gonna keep walking through it.
Sure, and then February 17th, which is, so our board meeting is on the 14th. So, okay, this is where.
Be on the board meeting.
This is one of our, one of our choices. We could have it be the same night as a regular board meeting or have a separate, to allow us as much time as needed.
So talk, let's talk about this because depending on how much conversation there is around the standards and are you using the OSBA standards, your own standards?
It's, it's OSBA standards, a previous version.
Previous versions, okay. So there's nine standards there that you're going to evaluate in each one of those. And depending on how you do that, that can be a lengthy conversation.
Yeah.
I have some boards that just want to average the scores, compile all the comments, not really have a conversation about each standard, takes them all in 20, 30 minutes. I don't recommend that, but that's, that's what happens. If you're truly going to talk about each standard, look at your individual ratings and then come together with one voice around what the rating is and what the comment is, that takes a conversation and it could be two or three hours. So my advocation for, for your consideration is, don't try to do that on the same night as a board meeting.
Yeah, I, I agree with the, with the evaluation itself. I like that thought of having it be a separate meeting and not knowing sports calendars and, and whatnot. We can amend.
Oh, absolutely, you can amend this.
But I, I agree, I like having it a separate date from the regular board meeting because that allows us as much time as we need. And we might still get that, or we might not.
Well, I think especially this first round and especially this first time, we've got to figure out how, how we're all doing it together and come together. And a firm believer in feedback is a breakfast of champions, that if, if we will give time and effort to this, it really feeds what we're trying to get to with giving Rachel tools or parameters or paradigm. And that's, that's really the only reason. Tools, or parameters, or paradigm. And that's, that's really the only reason that we're doing this. So I think it's totally worth the effort there.
Steve, I have a, or anybody, I have a question. So, so superintendent presents their self-evaluation, or artifacts of evidence, and then exits upon completion. That's new to me. I've just experienced the superintendent staying in the meeting the whole time, but.
You can, by coaching of you, you know.
Okay.
In part, you want everybody to speak freely, and the superintendent's presence can shut down.
Yeah.
Some board members.
That makes sense.
And this is where you need, in my opinion, to have very frank conversation, because if there's something there, and it has critical mass, okay? You could, at this time, it's very important this evaluation be with one voice. And that's why a moment ago, what I described, may or may not be your practice, so. It's not aimed at you, but I have some boards that will rate the superintendent in each one of the standards from zero to four, whatever. Average the score, put in everybody's comments, and just confuse the heck out of the superintendent.
Sure.
You have to have that tough conversation. So you gave her a three, you gave her a one, or you're seeing it differently, let's talk about what that is, because. That doesn't mean it said automatically it's two, and so forth. And so it's very important to have that conversation. So yes, I think it's important for the superintendent to speak, present, give their self-evaluation. Through the check-ins, you may have raised some concerns. It's a really good time for the superintendent to specifically address those concerns. And then, and when we talk about artifacts, that's part of our new evaluation system. It's just, we have a list for each standard of possible. Objective things that you can hand a board and say, I've done this work. And it's like a portfolio, but not as extensive as a portfolio. And then the superintendent leaves, and you have your conversation.
Yeah, that makes sense. Then only like one whole executive session. Yes, it's all on executives.
Yeah. Correct.
Unless Rachel chooses to have it. It's, it's up to Rachel to make that call. Yeah, and then a, a second meeting on our schedule, in case we need to clean things up to, to figure out what the final. You call it a summative evaluation document will look like. And then have that ready by the next board meeting. So that is where we go. The board chair will share the draft with, at least this is what we've done in the past. I'll share a draft with everyone. And then you let me know individually if, you know, something needs to be. Worded differently. Nope, Steve's taking a test. Yep.
Sorry, you're, you're describing an illegal meeting. That's why it's important in your executive session that you wordsmith it. This is the rating, this is the comment. And that's why the session can take a little bit longer, because if you wordsmith it outside, ask for their feedback, be it email, or however you do it. That would be an illegal meeting. So what? An illegal meeting. Thank you.
So draft it during those.
You, you, you basically want to come ready. In my experience, again, I wasn't in there, but what was described to me was that our board secretary had it up. And, you know, here's, here's the five different scores. Here are the five different comments. Alright, let's talk. Okay, the rating is X. Alright, let's talk about the comments. The comment is this, and maybe this. And then the, the board secretary types those things in. Alright, we're done with standard one. Let's move on to standard two. And so you kind of do it in the moment.
Yeah, that makes sense. I like that process. And then. Board chair does the knee, presents the draft to. Prior to the board meeting.
And if the board meeting's on the 14th, again, March 7th is.
Yeah.
Can change, but what I'm encouraging here is the board chair just shares the preview draft. Doesn't really speak for the board, doesn't really go through it. But we just say, you know, here's what the board has come up with, would like for you to see it. Invite you to an executive session before the regular meeting on the 14th. So, because this is a bit shorter. I would recommend that this executive session happen before the regular meeting. So that the superintendent can ask the board, not just the board chair, but the board, any questions that she may have.
Okay.
And that way, if there's, you know, if superintendent thinks, wow, this is really far afield, this, you know, I don't, I don't really agree with this, but I want more. You know, clarification, I want to have a conversation. So it's really giving them a preview copy and any chance to be heard on anything. To me, it promotes that sense of partnership. Yes, you're the boss, you're doing the evaluation, as you're gonna see in a moment, ultimately, you have the say. But it's good to listen to your employee if they have any concerns. And that's what's happening there. So on the 14th, you have an executive session, you hear from your superintendent. Once you're done, she leaves. And you have one last chance. Did we hear anything from Rachel? Did she bring up a good point? 99 times out of 100, no, because you've been pretty thorough, but just one last chance, is there anything we want to change? If so, you change it. If not. This moves into the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Or it becomes officially adopted.
And action.
It is an action item.
Okay, that makes sense. And.
So, do we turn that 3/7 date into an executive session, or into a, yeah, executive session?
It's 3/14.
So we're not gonna do the 3/7 day?
The 3/7 date is where I would just share the draft with Rachel, so that doesn't require meeting.
Correct. Yeah, it's just giving yourself some date by which. The board chair makes sure that you give a preview copy. That's a full week ahead of time. I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, if you finish it on the 17th. I mean, you've got plenty of time.
Yeah. And yeah, I think that makes sense. Anybody have concerns about that process? And then notify superintendent of contract extension or non-extension if applicable.
And that's really separate from your evaluation, but many times, they're tied together. And the law's not clear on a superintendent. On a superintendent slash principal, the law's clearer. You can do that extension, non-extension, just as you would for any other licensed staff member by March 15th.
And I can't remember what our contract, what your contract says, but we need to look at the contract.
Right.
There, there, the dates are in there.
Right. And that, you just took the words right out of my mouth. Yes, please pay attention to the contract. But the point of me putting this in here is, you want to finish your evaluation before the contract extension, non-extension conversation.
Yeah.
And Laura's trying to reverse that, you know, and do the evaluation afterwards, exactly, John. Like, oh, no, no, your, your, your community's gonna go, what? You extended the contract, and you haven't done the evaluation, so you just want to make sure you reverse.
And that, and that contract extension will include the pay, if there's gonna be a pay change as well. So that will be part of that process. Is that just for, is that usually, how does that process work with the pay? Negotiating a renewal of the contract, when it isn't automatically auto-renewing and all that.
Just as you did the original contract negotiations.
So what are two?
None of it can happen in executive session.
Right.
Usually, the board appoints an individual. It's, it's time for, the board can vote for contract extension pending successful negotiations, and then they usually charge. The member of the board, usually the chair. Go forth and negotiate our behalf, and then you guys have conversations one-on-one. It comes back to the board. For your approval in a public meeting.
Yeah, or, yeah, this is our proposal for the renewal of the contract.
And if the board checks.
And the salary.
You go back to the drawing board. That's right.
Okay.
At that point in time, usually it's around salary, benefits, but sometimes I've seen. Negotiation of contract language. Again, not being familiar with the contract, I'm not necessarily speaking specifically to it. But what I've seen as a trend is superintendents will agree to a no-fault termination. Sometimes as little as six months. As they get year two, year three, and so forth, they're either gonna want to extend that, because they kind of serve their probationary period, right? So they want it extended more than six months, or a year, or withdrawn altogether. And so I've seen that more and more across the state as superintendents are getting contract extensions and variables, especially in year three, year four. Where boards should have a sense of where their superintendent's at, and, and they feel. More comfortable with a full contract. And if I can make one other point. When you're done in March, the evaluation process starts the next month.
Yeah.
In April. Some boards will say, well, you know, we'll pick it up at the beginning of the school year, because that's when you're doing it here, but the only reason you're doing it now is because. Your superintendent started up in July.
Correct.
And so you will do the standard adoption. And you'll do a new timeline. And you'll adopt that in April. And it's also, starting year two, a good place to look at additional goals for the superintendent.
Yeah.
My encouragement is always, keep it simple in the first year, focus on the standards. But in year two and beyond, now that you've got one evaluation under your belt. Let's look at that evaluation. Let's give the superintendent some direction. Here's an area for him. Go away, write a goal, or two, bring it back to the board. Because you want to approve the goal, just like you approve the standards, but generally speaking. Superintendent writes the goal, as opposed to five people trying to write it in a public meeting. It's a lot easier for the superintendent to bring a draft.
Alright, and then I see that the. Interim progress meetings are.
Check-ins, yes, yes. I beat that horse until.
So three more.
On its ninth lie.
So, and I like that, I like that cadence of three plus the big evaluation within a year, that seems.
And in the first year, we stuck three here.
Yeah.
Again, to overemphasize the point, but in a full-year evaluation, every fourth month is a good cadence. Roughly.
I agree.
And I like, I like July, because it's a good time. It's kind of at the end of the school year. October, school year started, and then, of course, January is right before your summit of evaluation. So those months were picked with that in mind.
Yeah, this was helpful to go through it in more detail. What, what questions do people have? Anything? Comments? Thank you.
Good. Thank you for doing this, in terms of really just making sure everybody's on the same page. It is one of the most important, and you do so many important things, but this is one of the most important things that you can do. And again, I know my colleague shared, but when you get pressure from the community. And they say, well, I thought you guys were in charge. How come you're delegating everything to the superintendent? How do you oversee that work? Because there'll come time, times, and you'll talk more about this and roll your responsibility. You're gonna have to tell people, that's not board work. That's superintendent work. And ultimately, the question's gonna be, well, then how do you hold her accountable? When the evaluation process is, is there. You may not agree with all the decisions that Rachel makes, but if they're clearly her work. It's important that you support those decisions. Just as we're gonna talk about when you vote, and it's a 3-2 vote, the two that. Didn't get their way, lack of a better way of putting it, supports the will of the board. Doesn't mean you have to agree. It doesn't mean you have to change, you know, what you're passionate about, but you gotta support the will of the board. When you have a robust evaluation system, that's how you hold your superintendent accountable. Okay. Questions, thoughts, comments? Good stuff, good stuff, good stuff. How long have we been at this? And do we, not quite yet. Alright, let's go a little bit longer, and then we'll take a break. Alright?
Yes.
Alright, second on our agenda, and I'm gonna mush two into one. I hope this either looks familiar, or at least the content. Because I just very briefly wanted to come back to the expectations that you set for one another, which is at the bottom. So those should look familiar. Sarah took you through that exercise, and we came up with your top two or three. And this is encapsulated in your board operating agreement. Which I know, Sherry, when you and I exchanged emails, you were, that's good. I wanted to see that on the agenda. I want to make sure we come back to this. So let me start in this way. Let me start from the bottom and work up. Let me just look at those expectations. And ask you. Well, let's look at the board's expectations of the superintendent. Is there any questions, or comments, or reflection? There that needs to be stated, or is it pretty straightforward? I mean, this is ringing a bell, right? I mean, you remember the exercise, okay?
This is what we said.
And the superintendent's expectation of the board. Then as you read through that list. The board's expectations of the superintendent, and I know there are many, and that list was long. But these were your priorities. These can be attached to your evaluation standards. So when you can go into executive session, you can talk about these priority expectations. You know, if the communication has not been prompt and effective, as per your priority. And again, your standards are gonna be numbered differently than what I'm, I think it's standard three, communications and community relations. Then you go there in your check-in, and you have that conversation. This was a priority expectation. You think you're falling a little short, this is why. Have that conversation. So check in on your expectations for the superintendent in those executive sessions. Now, Rachel, your expectations of the board, if they're falling short, unfortunately, it has to happen in a public session. So depending on what those are, and, and how delicate that conversation might be, you might start with the board chair, or individual board member conversations, but. If it has to happen in a public meeting, it has to happen in a public meeting. I mean, these are your expectations. They've agreed. By, again, when you're ready, this is an action item. You vote on it. If the will of the board says this is your operating agreement, then it's your operating agreement, and you're expected to live by it, so to speak. Okay, so no questions on the expectations. So then I will kind of bounce back over to you, Sherry, and just, did you have? Any, any questions, or concerns, or something that you wanted to revisit here, or point out?
No, when the, I think the big thing for our board, operating together, is the will of the board is what, is what.
The will of the board is.
Is what moves us forward.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is really, so, and, and that's. Yeah, the collaborative governance and good. And we run into this, and it, and it happens. If someone does not get their way. And they do bring it up again, and again, then it's up to the board chair to have a discussion and call out. Hope that it doesn't keep.
Are you calling them out, or are you letting them advocate for what they're looking for?
Well, if we voted on it, it's, if.
If you're voting on something.
If, if we have voted on it, and it gets brought up in another meeting, the same thing, and we've already voted on it and moved on, that's what I'm talking about.
So if we vote on something, and there is still a need to advocate for a group of students, or whatever. How do we, as a board, continue to go down that other road?
I don't know that.
Because I see that sentence, and I've seen it in other pieces, and that's the one piece I have. It's a gray area that's like. At what point do, are you kind of saying, well, sorry, we voted, so this group of students, they're S.O.L.? Because what you're saying is, is, as a board, we have to put on this, and I totally get that. I'm, I'm, I'm on it. But at what point do, or do we potentially. Ignore, or have to veer away from. A group of students through a policy, or something that we voted on, that have a need, and it's a continued need. How do we keep that in mind? How do we keep that going without having to, you know, say, nope, we voted, we're not gonna do that? And I, I understand, we don't want to get into. Things that we've seen in the past. But how do we continue to advocate for students? I guess that's where I get lost in it.
Yeah. It's gonna be.
It's going to be difficult without knowing the context of what you're talking about because I can't necessarily think of an example that a board decision's made that shuts out kids.
And I don't have a good example.
I understand. I understand. I, I think that, that your, your statement by many, and I don't intend to be
Go ahead.
Critical. Is it, it, the generalization is so broad that we're casting a board decision that we can no longer advocate for students. And, and I think it's really decision dependent. You know, if it's a decision that's been made and you do need to move on. Then supporting the will of the board is, is important, but I don't think we ever lose our right to advocate for students. But if we're going to come back at it the same way several times and the will of the board is clearly moving in this direction. That's a different scenario, but I don't think we ever give up.
I think, I think we had a, a, a great example of this last year. There was, if I, I hope I'm getting this right for you, Mark, but there was a decision made at one point that we could not continue to provide meals for everyone. We, we didn't have the resources. We didn't have the cooks. We didn't have the delivery system to continue to deliver meals to everyone. And the board said, well, I took the superintendent's, uh, recommendation. We can do what we can do with the people that are able to make it to school, but we're going to have to stop on the, uh, bus because we don't have drivers, we don't have time and we don't have cooks. And so all three, all, all of that impacted. A member of the board kept saying that's unfair to those that cannot make it. The board agreed it was unfair, but the board also agreed that this is the best that we can do given the circumstances. And that this is how we'll move forward regardless. The board member came in and said, I want to bring this up again. I want to bring this up again. He go, you know, we can keep bringing it up. It's nothing changed. There's no more resources.
And that's a perfect example where the superintendent did not bring in enough information to give to the board. Had he said, this is going to impact 12 kids. I think the discussion would have been entirely different. Cause ultimately a day later, when the superintendent provided that information was like, oh, what we're talking about is not 200 kids.
No, that, that information was polite.
It was not.
But they, they just compromise on that though, because they at least made grab and go lunches available for those kids. So there was
There was a compromise.
Well, and this is, and they didn't really get left out.
And this is an example of when we vote on something. We do need to buy into that decision and publicly, we need to support that decision. Publicly, we cannot be undermining the will of the board.
And I, and I agree.
And so, and, and if a decision's made and new information comes to light. Something is really important that a board member feels we need to look at again. It can be on a discussion item. It can be added to the agenda. And we can bring it up again. And so that's how we handle it. It's, it's not by going behind each other's backs and talking negatively about the decision. And undermining our decision because the majority of the board is the will of the board. Um, and if something is important to a board member, we can't add it as a discussion item for future. So that's how I would say generally, but again, Steve, like Steve said, it's
It's hard to know.
Even that example we didn't vote on, we were just being informed of what
Yeah, it was a discussion.
Well, okay. So I'm going to come back to that in just a moment, not knowing the details there, but let me, let me bring this up here. Cause Mark, you raised a good question. And so let's tease out a couple of different parts here. Thank you, John, for trying to provide us with an example there.
And it was a good example. I think that's cause that was a perfect example.
And, and I want to say that that was an operations decision by the superintendent and that's not board work. We can discuss it. We can give our, we can give our opinions about it. But that's an operational decision and that lies with superintendent. That is not board work. It, it isn't.
Right. And, and so you beat me to the punchline. Okay. That's okay. You stole my thunder. That's okay. But let's set that aside for a moment. Okay. Cause I want to come back there. When decisions have to be made by the board, it is incredibly important that you establish procedures for those deliberations, those conversations that you do get as much of the information as humanly possible. That you have robust conversations and you have protocols where everybody can feel heard, that people can get things on the agenda and, and so forth and so on. So you've got to create this arena where you can have these conversations. That's really, that's a big step because when it comes time to make the decision, if it's three, two, four, one, something other than unanimous. When, you know, it is time to move on, it's important to support the will of the board. Now let's talk about what does support of the will of the board look like? Because sometimes when I say that in trainings, people think, well, I have to give up my opinion. I have to give up my passion. I have to, you know, run around and carry their sign and so forth and so on. The answer is in my opinion, no. You don't have to give up your side of that argument. And this is where some of my colleagues disagree with me, but, um, I think when you go out in the public, I think it's fine. You know, on that issue. This was my opinion and this is what I voted for and I voted against it. This is why. So you don't lose your perspective. But I also strongly encourage you to say, and I support the will of the board. So that was the decision I supported. I may not agree with it, but I support it. And again, most people can say and do that if you have a robust system that allows you to have those conversations. So that's supporting the will of the board. Advocating for something that may not well, we put this way, advocating either for a group of kids or a particular position doesn't have to go away. There are ways of being able to bring it back. You have to be a bit careful if you get stuck meeting after meeting and you're bringing it back and you're tiring out the rest of your board. Um, but if you can get a majority of the board to say, yeah, let's, let's reconsider that, or is there new information? Or, you know, a year from now, that situation might change because you talked about being constrained by the resources of the situation. So there are appropriate ways to bring, to bring them back. So I don't think that supporting the will of the board means you lose that education right. But I think it's important that you try to advocate in the right way. So they can go hand in hand, but I do see them as two different things, Rachel.
I want you to feel free to school me if I need to be schooled on this.
Okay.
I appreciate, uh, what Mark said because I think part of it also falls in building trust with the superintendent and the superintendent needs to be trusted to find those holes and address them. Uh, and, and that takes time. We, we've been together eight weeks, right? So we have a lot of work to do to have even a stronger partnership and trust each other. And in the end, if I'm not able to find those holes or address those holes, it comes out in my evaluation. Right? So that's kind of the, that's the safety net there for you to make sure that I am working to meet the needs of all students and no one's falling through the cracks.
Yeah, no, you're good. You're absolutely. And very briefly, and then I'll push this on because this is kind of a roles and responsibility piece. What you very briefly described to me and others have already characterized that discussion, and if there was a decision by board, to me, doesn't sound like board work.
There wasn't a decision by the board.
Okay. So, but here, okay, let's take this scenario. All right, board. But we use the same sit- situations, not board work, but it was okay for the superintendent to bring it to you as information, right? That's being a good part. This is my decision, but I'm going to share it with you. I want your feedback. But I also want you to respect that it's my decision. Now again, I don't know if I'm describing your situation or not. That's not my intention. I don't know nothing about it. All right. You gave me your feedback. We had a conversation. Thank you very much. I'm going to walk away. I made the decision. You don't agree with it. And it may or may not have been the case here.
Oh, that was the case.
Okay. All right. Good, good.
Board member very passionately did not agree with it.
Okay. All right. So either individually or collectively as a board, you may not agree with it. Just like the support of the will of the board. How do you support the decision of the superintendent?
That's right.
That is critical.
Yes. By not undermining, by not, not
Let's talk about how do you support a decision of the superintendent that you don't agree with, either individually or collectively? And sorry, you started, go ahead.
I, I, I would say, and, and it does get tricky. But oftentimes I would say, yeah, there was a lot going on with that decision and the push pull of resources, the push pull of space. And that made the most sense at the time to make that decision on the air service.
So let's do a little role play. Let's keep going. But I was at that board meeting. I saw you in that conversation. I know you don't agree with that decision.
I support Troy because of the time it's Troy.
Right.
And you know, I trust that he knows best how to move forward with the resource.
Wait, wait, wait. I thought you were in charge. We elected you to be in charge of the school district.
Yeah. Yeah, we set policy, we end up budget and we hire and fire the superintendent. And right now we're in a great place with our superintendent. We trust overall that they're doing a great job and they have our trust and
So you're just copying out. You have no real authority here. You're just copying out. All right. No, we'll, we'll stop. Those are real conversations. I know.
And we're, I'm asked why? I have been asked, why don't we manage, why don't you manage the superintendent? It drives me crazy that, um, you can't publicly admonish superintendent in pri- in private sector. We can call them out and, and make sure that they are doing exactly what we need them to do. And it's like, oh my gosh, we don't do evaluations in public. We do evaluations in this whole session and we work together. Yeah. I mean, this, these are conversations that I had with
No, and, and what we had was a relatively real exchange, right? That you've all probably heard.
I don't know how best to respond.
No, you did good. You, you, you did good. My coaching would be similar. Um, board members supporting board member, the board member minority supporting the board member majority.
Yeah.
This was my opinion. You're right. I didn't agree with the, just the, the decision of the superintendent. I may or may not have had all the facts, but what I know, I don't agree. However, that's clearly their decision to make. The information was just shared with us. It wasn't for us to vote on. It's operation. And we have an agreement that those kinds of decisions are made by the superintendent.
I think that's correct.
And so, you know, you, you can say, I don't agree. And I would also coach you to say, as an individual board member, I don't know the stance of the board. I'm not speaking for the board. But as an individual board member. I don't agree with that decision. However, I recognize and support the fact that it's theirs to make. Well, so they can run off and do whatever they want. No, we have systems in place. Like the evaluation, and if those kinds of decisions are consistently made and the rest of the board. You know, disagrees, then we have that conversation through the evaluation process. But right now they're following our policy and procedures. So very similar to what you said, but I, again, I think it's okay to say, this is my perspective. I do disagree as an individual. But you've got to say just as loudly and finish with, but I recognize and support that that's the role of the superintendent. Now where it really gets muddy is, is that board work or is that superintendent work? And we'll, we'll talk more about that in some examples in just a moment, but we're kind of in the roles and responsibilities piece. It's a very difficult conversation to have because some community members will come on a lot stronger than I did, right? And really, okay, yeah.
One of the things that you said that resonated with me and that I appreciated within during the role play was I don't have all the information. I am just one person here, but I, I would say that this for me goes back to my expectation of the board number four. Because I, again, we're working on trust. We always will. But I hope that I was hired because I have 35 years of excellent experience in education in ways that you don't. And so being able to say that maybe to a patron. I don't see that bigger picture. So I don't have all the information. It could be important.
It is a key piece. And the other piece I'll add to that, Rachel, thank you very much. That was well said. Is you're almost always going to be one-on-one with a community member or, or parent. What they don't realize is that you have no authority as an individual board member, only collectively. And collectively, by your policy and your procedures. You have delegated the task of operations to one person. Because you know what? It's impossible, impossible for the five of you to do Rachel's job, not because of who you are. It's any five board members. Okay.
Yeah.
But every board's in the same place. It is impossible for you to collectively do what she does. And so people need to understand that's the role of the superintendent. They, they are your collective delegation here. And, and I say that to say, that's why you don't always have the, the same information. Or all the information. Sometimes it's almost impossible. I had a really good friend of mine who's a board member down south. We had an over three hour conversation, but exactly what I described happened there. Superintendent came, it was around COVID, uh, stuff. As you can imagine, really wanted to partner with his board. It's a first year superintendent. I don't mean to scare you. But I will, uh, he laid it all out, you know, he was just, he was looking for feedback. He kept saying, you know, I understand this is my decision. It's very complex. But I, I wanted you to be in the know, had a really good session. And this one board member, even in the end said, you know, I understand, I support superintendent. Three days later, he was saying completely opposite because he did not agree with the decision that superintendent made. And became his worst nightmare. Came his worst nightmare. I wish I could tell you that I was successful and changed this board member's mind in our three hour conversation, but, um, it's just, it's very, very important, the things that we're talking about here. And so thank you, Mark, for bringing that up.
Yeah.
I kind of expanded on it a bit, but, um, it'll come up in our roles or responsibilities. All right. Now the one thing I didn't, Rachel, yes, please.
Sorry. I'm going to take us back to the board and superintendent operating agreement. I just, I would like clarification on the board's expectations of me for number one. When you state, provide data to board members so that data-driven decisions can be made. Who's making the decisions and are you talking about your decisions that are being made or you understand the decisions that I make?
I think both.
I feel like there's a difference there and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page from the beginning. Does that make sense?
True. That's a great question.
Yeah.
It is a difference. And I, I, I view a shared thing. It's both. We, we want to see how we're going to make a decision if that's the case. And, and we would like to see how you got to your decision. If it's an operational.
Do you think we could further clarify this then? Maybe just say when decision thing be made and or understood or something?
Sure.
Does, yeah. Would that work for people?
That's fine.
John?
No, that's fine.
Andy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. That's a great question, Rachel.
Because, I'm sorry.
No, please.
When you provide data to us, hey, this is why I made this decision. It also helps us better support you to the public as well.
But talk a little bit about what you saw tonight. Your, your first 10 minutes of this meeting. You shared data, you shared information. Now, not sure which way it's going. It may be foundation for a board decision. It's probably foundation for many of your decisions. But sharing that information so that you have data-driven decisions, even in the absence of knowing which direction it might go. What I'm feeling from this board is important. So I think that's a good example of, and you're not quite sure where that decision's going because it's still pretty broad strokes that you painted, but I, for me, wow, that's really good information. Especially about the pediatric numbers in Oregon. I just hadn't seen it. Really good. Um, so Rachel, you got your justification or your clarification. The one thing I don't see in the board operating agreement that we just spent quite a bit of time talking about is supporting the will of the board. Am I missing it?
Well, we have a separate board operating, operating agreement that we worked on and updated.
Oh, okay.
And
In part seven, there was something along that.
There was something along that.
And that's, that's laid out, was it?
Board protocol or something.
Yeah, it's a board operating.
Okay, so you have a separate board operating agreement, okay, okay, good, I know it's in your policy. And almost all of this, board superintendent operating agreement or board operating agreement can be found in your policy. And sometimes I have boards ask me, so why do you do this, it's all in your policy? And I said, well.
I need to cheat sheet is why.
That's exactly what this is intended to be, is your cheat sheet, exactly right, alright, anything else about the operating agreement? Now, related to this, but we're gonna do it after the break, is just a quick check-in on your communication protocols, because I know that you did that work with Sarah, it's caught up in this agreement. But we've been at this a little over an hour, I'd love to take nine minutes, come back at seven twenty, and then we'll continue our work, would that be okay? Alright. Thank you, I'll see you in nine. Do you have anybody on the line, Jim? Just out of curiosity.
No, it was really, because it's, it's. It's always a challenge. And we never want to be in a position squashing someone's face.
And that's, that's, when I read it, that's how I.
Yeah, and when you make a decision.
And that's why I advocate what I do, for people to still express their passion, their perspective in, in support of the will of, of the board, it's like, yes, my perception, my argument was, my opinion was, but I support the local board, so it's not to squash that voice.
And yet, you still, yeah, you still need to move on based on this decision that the board made.
I'm gonna get back in, I think I locked on, I'll grab something out of my car.
Okay, well, I'll make, I'll walk you out or just go get some door stuff for you. As I was walking out, I saw this on the wall, and I thought, oh my gosh.
Yes, I know, something.
Emergency numbers.
That's exactly right.
Shelter, go, please get a shelter.
Something board you got.
Yeah, we've hacked this, yeah, they just probably updated, we've had some like this.
Sure.
But I thought, oh my gosh.
And I knew that people would have.
But it's not.
The point was, there's something.
Yes, yes.
Gotta get this going.
Yeah.
That's funny.
And we're still with Graceful at home, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw, I see she's gonna open.
Yeah, she just lost it not too long ago.
Yeah, they, she said, the, the person that left sent an email out today to everybody, hey, there was a position there, oh my gosh.
Yeah, she's hired a lot of people, and it's been down to like, she should interview four or five. And she'll have to offer four or five topics, one won't accept it because they're accepting everything else.
Yes.
So interview a person, and then she'll give them a job, I already took one yesterday.
Okay.
Offered the job when this. Yeah, I'll have the job. There's none that I don't have anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, because current.
Oh, that's right, she switched to the toast position.
And so now.
Yeah.
What is it, what is the toast?
Well, it's kind of.
You're a specialist slash counselor?
Yeah, kind of, and she's gonna work with grade school and then.
But maybe it's.
Yeah, he's gonna do it with middle and high. Cause we're awesome. They've got jobs.
Luckily, he has us, you know, has us. Not covered necessarily, but they're, they really are watching. Cyber threats potentially right now.
They got, they got.
But it was hard for me.
Just going by school board, present, the members, roll the numbers of August, you got sixty-five kids in fifth grade. And you got thirty-three, thirty-two fifth graders in each classroom.
And first classroom. I, I can remember the, the middle school having thirty-some kids and that's, middle school has really nice sized classrooms and that felt crowded.
But the two fifth graders down here, they are bigger, that much.
You know, I taught, I taught here one year, I did a four-five blend, this one, that, that year that they moved fifth grade down here because it used to be in a middle school. And I was, they changed, there's, I have memories, it's the silvers and they're now for kind of.
Those are curtsies now.
But the ride across from the office, I don't know, but I was in there with the fourth and fifth graders.
And here's, and that's a small classroom, that's not a.
Oh gosh, yeah, it was like, oh my goodness, just.
Both those classrooms got across, these are small.
But when they built the school, it wasn't built with grade. Quite a few, what did they do to the old office?
A year or two.
The old, when they did all that remodel?
Yeah.
Okay, so down there, you see, um, the classrooms. Yeah, and kind of just student commentary that has lockers and there's a couple bathrooms and it's nice and then, and it opens up into the library, like double doors into the library. So like, it was.
The staff room still.
No, the staff room is in the same building where the offices is.
Yeah, but the times we're in. One more minute for Mike.
So I just briefly overheard her conversation about class size, fifth grader, sixth grader. And so I, parking back to when I was a middle school principal, first year, sixth grade geography class. Jensen was the teacher's name, I wish I could remember the number exactly, but it was in the mid forties. And he pulled it off. And you walk in his class, you thought there was twenty kids in there, not forty something.
It takes a special one.
Yeah, no, it, it, there's no other way to, you know, and we looked at the schedule and the sixth grade team teacher and I looked at it, it was a big size middle school. I can't remember what caused the, but it was in Florida, we had astronomical class sizes, but that was just the anomaly.
But I, I don't know this for sure, because I never taught in below the university, but the, back then, when, when I went to school, first through sixth grade, we had fifty students in each of the first grades, fifty students in each of the secondary, fifty students. But we also had a difference in the way that, uh, parents and teachers worked with students. And to try and do that now, I, I just, it just pains me to hear the, what people are doing and how this is going, I just, I can't imagine how teachers do this, this. I mean, I was in a private school, so I had, we had completely different setup, but you didn't, don't dig with the nubs, dude.
I was gonna say, you don't ask for the nubs.
Dealing with the nubs is gonna be a problem with the priest and the principal. But dad will owe you, and he already does, it's not gonna be good. And it won't be just today either.
He didn't care about your sentence, Jordan. He didn't care about your sentence.
Oh, no.
Same year, and I think you said you were a PE teacher, right? Seventy-two kids in one PE section, and by the time, and our periods were so short, by the time he called roll. Absolutely, the, the period is almost over, you know, it was, it was, it was strange, it was a strange year. But, uh, again, it took an extraordinary teacher, and in both places we had. But, again, you still have to, even with great teaching, question, so how much do we really get accomplished beyond just controlling the crowd? Right? But Florida was crazy at the time, I left the year after that, went to Montana where our class size was literally a third. Not Montana, sorry, Wyoming.
Their population is that little too?
Well, it was, it was the money, it was the money, because they had gas and oil. And we didn't have a classroom over twenty-two. Exactly, and here's the thing, my teachers would complain about their class size.
Oh, yeah.
And so I, I got to tell them my story, it's from Florida, right, they were just like, okay, maybe, maybe we'll be quiet, alright. Alright, so I'll, I'll, I'll move us on, thank you. So, communication protocols, I know you had that conversation, I know some of it is captured in your operating agreement. But very quickly, at least throughout two questions, since that conversation or even before, what's working well, and I don't mean this in evaluative, I mean this more in a systems kind of way. What's, what's working well for you board and or superintendent in terms of your communication back and forth? What's working well?
The, the weekly email that Rachel sends out, like this is what I've been working on this week, these are the questions that have come up from board members of the community and, and stuff like, very detailed.
And the, I, I find that the board, I don't know what to call it, Joe, with that face piece that you have on your, on the, look into the board M A S D ninety-one, the face page comes up. That information, I'm seeing, I know it's been, uh, Mark that's been updating him, but that stuff is salient now, and I'm finding it to be worth, worth reading as opposed to when I used to read it before, and it was always there, there was always something, and it was usually the COVID number, and I'm sure that was important, but. Yeah, yeah.
It's been revamped, yeah.
When, when, uh, parents and, uh, people in the community are asking me, they ask me questions, you know, silly stuff, uh, about, uh, how do I know this, or what's, why did this go down, they go, have you ever looked at the school board page? I don't do, uh, Facebook, no, this isn't on Facebook. Have, have you ever looked at, no, I haven't, well, there's a lot of this stuff in there, and there's a lot of questions, and I'll, I'll take you through it right now, and I can even pull them. But when we, when, when I used to go to that for my first year, year and a half plus that I was here, and I'd go to that, I'd go, this is more challenging than it's supposed to be. I'm an old guy, I get it, uh, I'm not competent at computers, get, get used to it. But if I, who have had computer stuff and have access to you guys, can't get of it, then it's too complex for our community. And I care and I try, and they should just be able to just do, this should just be like him hitting a key. And I think we're almost there, I, I'm very, very pleased with, with what's going on, um, since you came.
Great, thank you, Joe, what else is working well, this is two really good examples of systems, the weekly emails, the webpage.
I know that we had a situation where we had to call a special meeting and Rachel texted all of us to remind us that there's an important email waiting, please read it, and that's something we agreed on and it worked.
Okay, that's a popular kind of that crisis communication or that crisis urgent.
Yeah.
You know, text everybody, hey, heads up, check your email.
That's something we talked about, do that, you know, when you really want us to look and it worked well.
Well, for the last, for the last two years, uh, on the board, Sherry's willingness to be available and to take calls, uh, whenever and respond directly on. Thank you, well, the real leadership.
Good, thank you. Anything else really well, I always love to emphasize the strengths, I'm gonna ask the second question in just a moment, what can you improve, but any, any other shout-outs?
I mean, she's gonna send something to the community. We get a heads up on that, which is really nice, so we know what's coming out to them. And when she says it's gonna go out this time, we'll still get a, you know, copy of it, and oh great, she sent it out.
Okay, so a preview, but then also you know that it went out.
Yeah.
And I would just say kudos to the tone and content of your communications, because I, I'm a writer and I, I wordsmith sometimes to death.
No.
And I know, I know how long it takes to come up with communications that seem, yeah, effective, right tone, getting the right key points, so you're, you're already exceptional there, so thank you.
Rachel, it looks like you hit your head.
Yeah, I have kudos for the whole team, because what I, what I have experienced in the last eight weeks is that every single one of you, when you have a question, you don't hem-haw around, you get right to me and you ask me, and that way there's transparency, and I, I just so appreciate that, and I think that does help build trust, so keep up the great work.
But that's, that's also something, talking to community members and staff members here too. The ease and approachability that you have just within, you know, the first couple of months, has really set a great tone, um, for the community and, and the staff that have communicated with you directly as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What about areas of improvement? Again, it doesn't mean that it's bad, it doesn't mean that it's failing, but you'd like maybe a little more effort or emphasis or whatever it might be, but.
I'm still under the communications umbrella.
Yeah, we're talking communication protocols, right?
I don't know how we can get past it right now, but I really want to get rid of the mask. I really want to get rid of the mask. I know I look better with it, but I want to get rid of the mask.
I think our bigger problem's gonna be October eighteen.
Yeah.
What? Gonna be October eighteen. I think that's gonna be the bigger, well, and not just staff, but community as a whole. Education in general is gonna be, and all the other things she's put it on there, so.
So let's use that as an example, mask and the vaccination, just, just briefly, how can you better your communication, or what kind of communication do you need over the next six weeks? About six or seven weeks? What do you need from one another? What do you need from one another?
I, I would say staying on point that we, we are required masks. And we're, we're not being given a choice. And it's a step to keeping the kids, I, I like to accentuate positive. It's a step in the right direction to keep kids in the classroom five days a week. All these, all these safety measures that we're, we're putting in place really are to keep kids in person um and but I don't know if we need to be. I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know.
I don't know. I, I candidly don't believe that a mask can stop a virus. And, and I don't believe what the governor is putting out. I don't. But, but that's just me. But I do believe that children in school is so much better than uh not. And not only was it a problem for families, but it was I, I think kind of a lost year for students. Uh I'm uh I, I think everybody will survive, but there's, there's gonna be some, some gapping, some serious gapping. And uh I'd love it, I'd love for math or English to be in the big deal, but really, my, my heart is with people. And the people, we had kids that didn't get to be with other kids. That, that sucks. Didn't get to play baseball, didn't get to play kickball, didn't get to have jokes, didn't get to go to the window, didn't get to talk in the lunchroom. That, that cuts real, real, real deep. Especially, I mean, I come from a large family, I have a large family, so, but when you're an only kid or you've got two kids, but you're nine years older than the other one, or it's nine years, that, there's, there's some real there's some hearts that have been hurt. And we, we got some, there's gonna be real um the listening heart and ear, listen with the ear of your heart, a same one, so. But uh doing that kind of stuff as a teacher that this, especially in these first two months, I think it's just gonna be, I think that's gonna be like the job.
Well, and, and John, like, that is the focus, right? When they come back is that care and connection. Teachers know that, administrators know that. Like, that whole care and connection piece is that, that focus when, when the kids come back, right? And, and I think that, yes, they didn't learn as much as, as they would have had they been in school. But we, we, I trust our teachers that they're gonna do the best to get them going, they're gonna be where they're at and, and we're gonna be fine. We're gonna be, we're gonna be fine. You know, it's not, it's not, it wasn't a great year. It wasn't a great year. A lot of kids suffered because of that, but positive outlook is, we're gonna get through this and we're gonna be better in the end.
Regardless, uh we're gonna get through it. We, we are marching. Time is moving. Uh there is no party. The clock is ticking and you're getting older. And somebody else is gonna be in third grade this coming year, so you're moving on fourth, buddy, don't worry about it. And we're all gonna work through that. Uh a board, superintendent, teacher, students, I mean, all of that's gonna happen. But uh I don't know what the body is. I got a big one sitting. And uh I, I made, I tried to make my point and I don't have anything else really to say.
So I would, I would add that in the next eight weeks or so is just to continue staying on top of things that are changing, communicating those things that you score. And I think that's obvious, but I think you've done such a good job that you've kind of sort of highbowed it. And, and it's great. I, I, I hope we have some changes that just communicating what is happening as we start school, as we make our way through Oktoberfest and then beyond, so.
And I think about um the couple of comments that you made and where you started this conversation using this as a perfect example of our agreements and, and how we support each other. And I, I already know that based on where we're at, based on local data, because now annual data is not great right now by zip code. Uh based on the fact that Oktoberfest has the potential to be a super starter, right? That some difficult decisions are probably going to have to be made by me. And what I'm going to need from you is your support for really tough decisions. Going back to how this whole meeting started with, I don't necessarily agree, but I support the will of the group. I support the superintendent uh with the information that I have. I'm gonna need that from you. I just know it already.
It's an excellent point. And let me just summarize a couple of things that I heard in here. And then I'll, I'll move us on and, but I didn't wanna miss anybody if you wanted to add to the conversation. So here are some themes that I heard in, in, in your conversation. One, we can choose to be positive or negative. The encouragement is to be positive. We can still be factual, we can still lay out different perspectives, but what I heard inside of this was, let's stay positive. The second is um being balanced in our personal perspectives versus our professional duties. I mean, it's one thing to believe X, Y, and Z and be able to say that. I mean, John, you did an excellent job of, you know, I don't believe in X, Y, Z. However, you know, my professional duties over here, I'll take care of kids, supersedes that. And I recognize that as my professional responsibility in this, in the, in this group. And so being able to separate those, doesn't mean you have to hide your perspective. But, but I call a balanced viewpoint. And being able to see multiple perspectives as opposed to what I'm seeing across the state is a very monolithic blinder one, you know, type of thing. So being balanced, being positive, being supportive of one another, even in disagreement is, is important. And something that I heard there. And really staying focused on why we're doing what we're doing. And I heard that pretty loud and strong in terms of, yeah, I don't like this, this and this. Sure wish it was different. But if I gotta do that to keep kids in school, then, you know, I've always said for COVID from the beginning, especially for superintendents and boards, there's no winning solution. Whatever you do, there's gonna be some losers, if you will. There's gonna be a downside to whatever the choices in school, on school, dah 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 dah. And so you're making the best of a bunch of bad choices. And you're doing it positively, you're doing it with balance, and most importantly, you're doing it with kids in mind. So that's what I heard you say. That's where your focus needs to be. Oh, there was one more. When in doubt, and I'm not just looking at Rachel, over communicate. This is a time, now this may, you may not be able to sustain this for the entire year or your whole career. But I think what I heard this group say is there's such a priority in getting out the information, communicating among yourselves, out to your community, that this is the time to over communicate. So that's what I heard. That's kind of what you're taking into these next few weeks. You had a lot of great things to say about your communication protocols. I'm gonna move us on if that's okay, if you're satisfied with that conversation. Okay, so I wanna move into this last piece. I'm gonna move relatively quickly and let your questions stop me where I need to stop. Okay, I recognize that at least half the group is within the first two months of your roles and responsibilities. And so some of this could be relatively new. And I include the superintendent in that. Especially for our first year superintendent, even if you've been an assistant superintendent, just like I was in London for eight years before I became superintendent. When I became superintendent, it's a whole different ballgame. I mean, I thought I knew it. Maybe not all, but I thought I knew a lot, right? Because I worked alongside my superintendent, I worked with the board, so forth, so on and so on. Wow, was there a whole bunch I didn't know? When it came to working with boards, right? I knew curriculum, I knew HR, I knew all that other stuff because that was my responsibility. What I didn't know is I was taking that all off the plate with my superintendent, who was dealing with this political animal that we called superintendents. And knowing what the role of the board is. So in this next piece, I'm gonna move again pretty quickly. We're gonna start out with big broad, big broad strokes of what the difference between board work and superintendent work is. And then I'm gonna move into some scenarios and I'll explain the pink cards and the blue cards that are in front of you when we, when we get there in just a moment. So here we go. As you probably heard, the work of the board is really governance. It's high level. Sometimes we call it that thirty thousand foot level. It's big picture. Whereas a superintendent is the management, it's day to day, it's operations, as we said a moment ago, it's operational. Another way to describe it is you determine the what? Superintendent figures out how to get there, the how, the details. Another way to describe it is you determine the ends. Superintendent determines the means. You determine the destination. Superintendent turn, determines how you get there and the details, what kind of transportation, what route are you gonna take? Is another way to describe that, governance versus management. So we paint a little bit of a black and white picture here. Board policies, goals, what I call strategic direction for the district is important. Advocacy, that's that community connection that we talk about. For the superintendent, it's operations, it's personnel, it's the regulations. Now you'll see three red arrows there. And they're only pointing upward from the superintendent's half up into the board's half. Why do you think those arrows are only one way? You've heard me talk all night long about partnership, partnership, partnership. But why do I have one-way arrows there?
Because working with a board is a one-way street.
No, you're good, you're good. Explain a little bit more. What do you mean by a one-way street?
Well, it's all, it is all coming down. You are the, you are the de facto, you are, no. When, when things go right or wrong, people, and they'll live routes when they go right, that when things go wrong, people are not gonna say, what was the who, when, why? They're gonna ask you, how did you get there? It's always gonna be about how.
Okay, there's a lot of what you delegate that goes to the superintendent, no doubt about it.
Well, she, the superintendent, he or she is always the one who figures out how it gets done. We can do the five W, we must do the five Ws. And we've gotta stay out of how, but when things are not working, people are interested in how did you get to this? How, how did we get here? They don't wanna hear the theme of the theory. They wanna know who was on how. It's their bottom line.
I, I agree with that. The reason I put these red arrows here is board work is almost never done without consultation with the superintendent. Policies, advocacy, direction, you're always gonna ask feedback for your superintendent. The opposite is not true. The superintendent is not going to hold the board every time they need to make a decision here. That's why the arrows exist there. That's why it's a one-way. You will always collaborate with your superintendent, but it's not going to be the other way around. We're gonna get into some details about what that looks like. But I also like this slide because I wish I could tell you that it's so black and white that you'll always be able to know what's board work and what superintendent work. Sherry smiled, I can tell he put the mask on, all right? But it's not. It can get real muddy. Towards the end of this, I'm gonna give you a real life scenario that happened to me. We're gonna talk about how we uh did something and then illustrate ultimately where I think this is gonna land. But before we get there, we're gonna take a quiz of sorts. All right, I'm gonna put up a scenario and I'm gonna ask everybody to declare. Is it board work or is it superintendent work? And so you have two cards in front of you. Board work is the pink card. And Jill, if you'd like, please play along if you'd like. And if it's superintendent work, then it's the blue car. Excuse me. And again, some of these you might be able to argue one way or the other. But what I'm really looking for is ultimately, who's the decision maker? Who implements this particular scenario? I also want to caution you because as the scenario comes up, I'm gonna want you to declare board work, superintendent work. Just hold it up there until everybody decides. But I want you to be very careful of the BS card. Where you hold up, well, that's both board and superintendent, all right? I want you to declare one or the other.
Board work is always superintendent.
No, I didn't say that. I said you collaborate with. I'm gonna illustrate why that's important. All right, you'll collaborate with, but it's not always on them, all right? So anyway, be careful of the BS card. Let me throw up the first one. Modifying the student discipline policy, board work or superintendent work? I got a pink, I got some blues. All right, well, let's start with my outlier. Why is it board work? Rachel?
Because it's a policy.
Okay, it's a policy. Anything else?
I guess it would depend on what is already in place with student policy in our own board policy work. So I might need more information to know that, but I know that there is student discipline within the board policy
Okay.
manual, so.
So for you, the key here was the word policy.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All of the other blue cards. Why did you say superintendent work? What in that phrase made you think, oh, that's superintendent work?
We only approve policy.
Okay, so.
To the extent of approving the policies.
All right, so for you, the word approval was missing, okay?
Yeah, and I just thought student discipline.
Okay, student discipline seems, seems to.
I probably didn't read the policy.
Okay, all right, we're good there. What else?
That's exactly, I did what you did and skipped what she did. Seen on a previous slide there that everything that was policy was board, but I blew right through that, okay?
This is board work.
Yeah.
This is board work. Policy is the key. Yes, approval is important, but you cannot modify the policy unless the board modifies it.
Can she bring it to us in a red line form?
Yes.
That's how.
I, I know you did, I know you did, right? So how would we change this to make it superintendent work? What would we change to make this statement superintendent work? You hit on it.
Redlining and uh submitting it to the board.
Recommended, right, recommended. So yes, you looked at the word modify and, and was thinking recommendation. Okay, now, I wrote these somewhat vaguely on purpose, so bear with me. But yes, the key word here is policy, approving it, modifying it, or not modifying, recommending it. What's another word that we could substitute to make it superintendent work?
What if instead of it saying policy, it said modifying the student discipline handbook?
Yes, okay, take the word policy out of there. Modifying the student handbook. Another way to change this is implementing the student discipline policy. Okay, good. All right, let's look at the next one. Uh blue card, red card. Establishing an in-school suspension system. And Jill's going, he's trying to trick me. I know he's trying to trick me. Peer pressure. No, I, no, but you get, you were right. It's superintendent work. All right, this is blue card. This is the details. It's taking your policy. In-school suspension would be something that would be inside of that. All right, let's look at a couple of your policies, because you actually have policy on how to make policy, believe it or not. C E F, policy development, these are your policies, talks about policies prescribed in general terms. Now, I've had some boards that try to micromanage my policy. Because they know, hey, see, we're in charge of policy and I'm gonna lay out everything in this policy and basically tie my hands in superintendent.
So they want the how and the, and.
Yes, you look, you look at boards that micromanage your policy, their policies will be pages and pages long and it'll have a lot of details in there. Okay, uh they create a framework. The other part of this is uh B F C A, which is administrative regulations. A R's is what, what those are called. You have a policy that states that A R's are to be approved by the superintendent. And hopefully that is your practice. There are some exceptions, there are some. There are some exceptions. There are some flow-through federal policies that require you, board, to approve the ARs. But ninety percent of the time, the administrative. Regulation is at the will of the superintendent. To me, this clearly kind of divides the governance versus management. Governance is policy, management is the administrative regulation. That's why I spend a little bit of time here. I also find some boards that unilaterally and completely approve. ARs. And my caution there is you just turn all your ARs into policies.
Correct.
And no one can change them except for the board, and that becomes problematic for the superintendent.
So Steve, it's like ORS is an O R, right?
Yep.
The legislature, that statute and the whatever writes the O R's that.
Correct.
The administrative rules that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, let's talk about one little thing here at the bottom. You see, I've got a second highlight. This bottom sentence says the board may review any administrative regulation. And may revise it if. Now, first of all, before I talk about that, what is your current practice around knowing what the ARs are? How is the board informed of administrative regulations? And you may not have had to do this yet, Rachel, so I'm really looking to the board. What's been your practice? And what would you track, what would you like your practice to be? You've done some policy work. In that policy work, it says ARs will be developed. What's your expectation from superintendent?
That we see those.
And normally, when do you see those?
Well, usually, if my memory serves, we see them about the same time that we see. Policy updates for the policy adoption.
And you do two readings, so you probably see it at the second reading, if applicable.
That sounds right.
Good. And so here, by your own policy, if you don't like the AR, you can revise it. It is important for the board to see the AR so that in their minds it is congruent with the policy. However, I would not recommend this practice. One, the minute you revise it, it becomes policy, not AR. Two, I think it's sufficient to say to your superintendent, this is not quite in congruence and this is why. Please go back and try again.
Should it say make recommendations to revise?
Yes.
Instead of just revise it?
Yes.
Then it's no longer, less than it's back to.
That is correct. Yes. I would change that. I changed that language a little bit so that I've seen also, uh, and this is, uh, last time it looks like ten. Uh, and Jill, I could probably sneak out our poll, our model policy and not let my director of policy know. If you wanna look at maybe what the current recommendation is. And if you'll send me an email to remind me, I'll absolutely do that. The board may review any administrative rec, rec, regulation and direct the superintendent to revise. So you're not saying what the content is, you're just saying this doesn't work. Go fix it, kind of thing. So, and also Jill, the latest, um, again, I don't think this has been a problem for you, but I just wanted to point out that. If you revise it, then it becomes policy and can't be changed. And that can be problematic. Alright, um, let's move on. Let me just give you another example. Here is a, excuse me. Policy on homeless students. It's a half page. It's a couple of paragraphs. It's a policy. It's general. It provides a framework. I only clipped part of this, but this is four pages long. This has got all kinds of definitions and details. And that's an AR. That's an administrative regulation. That's where all the details live. And the superintendent needs to be able to change that as needed and not have to wait next month to bring it back to the board. And that's why it's an AR. Alright. Alright, good. So, blue card, red card. Here's your next scenario.
Actually, it's neither. It's neither.
It's neither?
That should be the building admin.
Oh, okay, so you have no card up, alright? Alright, so everybody else has got blue card up. Let's, let's go to yourself. No card. You're saying that responsibility lies at the building principals, what says high school? Or the high school in this case?
High school be different than an elementary? You would, you would make the assumption that. The high school admin would be the one creating that document and, and enforcing it.
Could be.
In conjunction with the superintendent, but that would be a building.
Well, describe, describe in conjunction with the superintendent. What's the superintendent's role in your scenario?
A, a review of policy, a review of that.
A review of that, but not ultimately the decision maker. So if, if she disagreed with the high school principals, she's out of luck.
I know.
Probably not, okay. Alright, I love your argument. This is the first time I've heard this, so this is really good, alright? What about the rest of us? We said superintendent work, why?
I mean, I just know from revision when I was in middle school that, you know, we may have created the handbook and. Input and, you know, things that went in it, but I'm pretty sure that it had to get the approval of the superintendent.
I can't imagine that the superintendent can have something going on in their. Purview that doesn't have their stamp of approval on it.
And, and I'm not saying it doesn't have her stamp, but it says approving the high school. Right, so, so the building administrators, you mean the one that says, yep, this is what I'm gonna enforce. And, and they're gonna have Rachel's buy-in on what's in that.
Isn't that her approval?
Well, regardless, it's like.
No, it's a very interesting argument. If, if I made you choose one or the other, it'd be the superintendent. I get that. Let's see what your policy says, cause you're right. This, this is superintendent work. My first year at South Uplands, for my second month on the job, so this time. Uh, we had this very long board meeting. We had five buildings. Building principals came in, went through their entire handbook with the board. Marathon, marathon, and the board had to approve it. Okay, and I sat through this, brand new superintendent, didn't know what I didn't know, right? But then a month or two later, um, I think it was the middle school principal came back to me and said, well, I need to make these changes in the handbook. And I said, okay, I'll, I'll get it on the board agenda. Oh, no, no, I, I don't need their approval. Oh, yeah, you do. This is why. And so I was able to illustrate to them, to the board, why it was problematic. And they said, but Steve, we, we need to know what's in the handbook. Well, of course you do. I'll give you copies of it. You can read it to your heart's content. We'll talk about it at a board meeting. And so all we fell into was. Very briefly, principals walk through the changes from the year before. And particularly if anything was gonna cause bustard with the, with the board. But let's look at your. Um, well, I guess you didn't have one. Let me just back up. Yeah, okay. So, I did not find a policy on handbooks in general. So there's no guidance one, one way or the other, per se. Now, I can't remember, but we'll get to it in just a moment. But in the absence of policy, generally speaking, the superintendent has the authority to act. So if there's no policy that guides whatever that decision is. Then superintendent acts, usually then the board's informed later if a policy is needed. But now let's look at specific dress code expectations because you do have a policy on student dressing room. Again, it's about a half page. Now, this is not your handbook, but it's a typical handbook on dress code and look at the detail. Okay, again, I just illustrated an operation versus big picture. Now, I will say, most boards will say to their superintendent, and sometimes this is found in policy. You make the decision on the handbooks, not just student handbooks, but any handbook. And our direction to you is it must be in line with. Board policy. And sometimes that is stated in board policy. Alright. Let's transition on to, alright. Again, blue card, red card. Read the screen and then hold up your response. Okay, am I gonna be unanimous again? Yes, blue. What in, what inside this makes you say superintendent? Hiring high school principal, personnel. This is superintendent work. So I'm guessing you don't have a practice here in this district of board members sitting on hiring committee.
That is correct. That is our practice. Board members do not sit.
Do not sit, okay.
With the exception of the superintendent.
Right, so the process is completely owned by the superintendent. Again, I have some words that say. No, board member should sit on hiring committees. We won't have that conversation here.
I feel like we had a board member, cause I've been on hiring committees for like the middle school principal a couple of different times and. I don't know, for some reason, I thought there was a school board member present, but I could be wrong. I know the superintendent was there along with, you know, teachers, some of the staff and.
And sometimes superintendents will encourage board members to sit on hiring committees. Uh, I think it's a dangerous practice. I think it sends the wrong message because this to me is clearly superintendent work. And quite frankly, you have more important things to do. This is why you delegate certain tasks and new superintendent. Don't encourage your board to sit in on hiring committees, alright? Um, so enough said about that, cause I do wanna get into, through this fairly quickly. What about this? Read it. Blue card, red card. I see some blues, I see some reds, Sherry. Well, that's why I wrote it. Alright, so we got red and blues. Alright, my blue cards first. Um, why is this superintendent work? What inside that statement is making you think superintendent work?
Says administrators. All falls below superintendent.
Okay. So it's talking about employing qualified administrators, okay? Anybody else wanna add to that? Why is it superintendent work? Alright, for, for the folks that raised the red card, why is it board work?
I think we could have a policy that includes the expectation that we're gonna have, well, qualified.
Procedures is my key.
Say again?
The word procedures.
Okay.
Thinking like policy.
For me, it was set expectation. And that seemed to be a. Oh, uh, three thousand foot view.
You're absolutely right. This is the key phrase. It is board work. There's other key miscellaneous phrases. I didn't use the word policy, cause that would have given it away, right? Setting expectations through your policy. That hiring procedures, which is administrative work, all you're saying is that they will be established. You're not saying what they are. And so this makes a policy work. This is board work. All you're doing is directing the superintendent. Hey, make sure you've got procedures in place for hiring these individuals. Alright, let's look at very quickly. This is your policy on hiring licensed administrators, C C C. You can see there's five steps there. There's a fair amount of detail here. Maybe a little bit more than I'd like to see in a policy because it says right here, number three, that you will use the screening committee. So you are to some degree dictating what the procedure is going to be. See if there's another example in there. Uh, for the most part, it's relatively general. It gives the superintendent some latitude. But overall, that's, that's your policy.
Well, go back a minute, Steve. So the last sentence there, the superintendent's recommendation will then be presented to the board for consideration. Don't we only? So, well, we approve hiring.
You approve hiring by law, for who?
Yeah, for the superintendent.
For the consent items.
And the consent agenda, where they hire people.
But by law, you're required to approve the hiring of. Who, you actually hire the superintendent.
Yeah.
But.
The superintendent recommends, these are the people we hire and the board has to approve that.
For administrators?
Well, doesn't, doesn't have to, but it usually does. We're gonna talk about that. This is an important point, but what groups?
So does the law say that we have to approve hiring of administrators?
I'm asking you. Licensed.
Licensed.
Licensed. So teachers and administrators, you are required by law to approve those hires. Not necessarily classified, but many places do.
Yeah, yeah, we do that. I just didn't realize it.
So. I'm gonna sit down for just a second. Why? Why are you approving these recommendations? What if you disagree? What if you don't like the selection the superintendent's made?
Good question.
She's recommended Steve Kelly for third grade teacher. You don't like Steve Kelly. He spends way too much time at the local lottery hall.
So can you object and would you have, if you, you know, you had reasons for not wanting this person?
And what would those reasons be? You, you're. You're absolutely playing right into my example, so keep going. Give me just an example.
If you. Maybe you know this person and you know what their qualifications are and you don't think that they fit that.
Based on my qualifications or the fact that I spend too much time at the local lottery hall? When you say you know me, what, what is it that you know about me?
Well, cause I taught with you and I had to do all the work.
Okay, for, for whatever reason, you don't like me.
Is that something that you would look, right, cause it's presented? On the agenda, is that something that you would then reach out asking that, that to be removed from the agenda?
You can. So let's say you're removed from the consent agenda. You moved Steve Kelly to a different part of the agenda. What's that conversation look like?
Does it have to be executive session?
It can't be executive session.
Well, it's questioning the process that was used to get to the.
Is it questioning the process? Are you questioning the judgment of your superintendent?
Good.
So here's the line that I'm trying to draw. And I'll move this on just for the second time, but you illustrated beautifully, and this is what happens sometimes, is recommendations are made. My encouragement to you is do not substitute your judgment because you lack all the information. You lack some of the information. Right? Don't substitute your judgment for your superintendent's. Because the information that you have in all likelihood. Is gathered outside the hiring process. So whatever you know about me wasn't part of the hiring process. The interviews, the questions, the background checks, the, all the things that are in the, in the, in the process that's established. So it's very important that you don't substitute. However, there are reasons that you could reject the recommendation. But it doesn't have anything to do with the individual being recommended. And here they are. And this is by, by law. You're approving the contract. You're not really approving the individual, per se. Is why it comes to you. Now, with your CBA, your collective bargaining agreements, you know, those contracts are pretty cut and dry, but some administrator contracts. You should be seeing that contract. So when it comes to you for recommendations for hiring, you should see that contract. So if you object to the contract, there's something in the contract. Too much money, too many perks, whatever it might be, then you question the contract. Two, the budget. If this position's not in the budget, you can absolutely. Call out the superintendent on, wait a minute, where is this coming from? Is it in the budget? And so forth. So again, you're not attacking the individual person, per se. You're not substituting your judgment for the superintendent's. You are objecting to procedural things. You're really questioning was our policies and procedures being followed. And then that's the third one, and Sherry said it just a moment ago, is. Do you know the hiring procedures? Yes, you should know what they are. They belong to the superintendent, but yes, you should know them. And you could ask the question, where do they fall? Were there any deviations from our normal hiring processes in this hire? Beyond those three things, you should approve the recommendations of your superintendent. Because their recommendation is based on knowledge you don't have. Now, this is immediately where a board member says, well, Steve, that's why we need to sit on hiring committees. No, I'm not talking about individual board members. I'm talking about the board as whole. That's a very important point because many times a board and superintendent can get sideways. Because they think they know this individual and they're basing their rejection of a, a recommendation. Based on information that really was not part of the hiring process. based on information that really was not part of the hiring process. Now, if your superintendent makes questionable hires, where do you hold her accountable? During the evaluation process. Yep, yep, yep. You got it. Alright. Um, so I, I said a moment ago, there's your policy. Uh, you'll see the OSBA sample policy. It's a little bit shorter. It's a little bit more general. Doesn't tie the hands of the superintendent as much. Again, I see this a lot. It's not that overest. I've seen a lot worse. It may just be something you may want to look at, have a conversation with the board, if there's anything in there that you think ties your hands. Alright. Uh, and that's just general personnel policies. That's a bit more general. That's for all staff. Alright, next one. Red card, blue card. Board work or superintendent work? I see a red, a blue, a red. I see Sherry going back and forth. She still wants to play the BS card, right? She just wants to. Alright, so a good mixture. Alright, so those of you that said superintendent work, what inside that statement is leading you towards superintendent?
Collaborates with staff. We collaborate with staff.
Okay, so for you, the key word is collaborates with staff. What else in there throws this to superintendent work? So that seemed to be the big, the big one for most people. Alright, what about those that chose board work? Why did you say board work?
District.
District goals, right? Going back to that original slide that said goals.
And it's a future, you know, a couple of years down the road. To me, it's kind of like strategic. But that's a pretty specific goal.
It is pretty specific. Yes, you're right. This is board work. And yes, collaborates with staff was put in there on purpose to throw you off the scent. The key here is to set the district goal. It's a little specific, but it is down the road. It's more of a strategic direction. And yes, boards can collaborate with staff alongside their superintendent and in very structured ways. This is, in my opinion, at the heart of board work. And I realized that even my own organization for years, and when I first got to OSBA, preached the, you have one employee. You never really talked with staff, worked with staff, do anything with staff. But seven, six, thirteen years ago now, I was one of the first superintendents in the state of Oregon that was fully trained in the lighthouse model. Seventy-two hours of professional development, three hours a month for twenty-four straight months. It was a lot. It was too much. Okay. But when we got to this piece that came out of research and we did this piece, my board, my teacher leaders, my administrators, in a structured way, we first set the goals together. And then my board monitored our progress, sitting elbow to elbow with the very teachers that were implementing it in the classroom. It was the most powerful conversations I ever heard. Completely changed the focus of that school history. I had teacher leaders that said, I didn't know board members cared that much about kids, to be honest with you. And I had board members say the same things right back. So I could talk about this all night long. And I know that you've got some, um, maybe time left with your transition program. Um, I think this is your third session. Is that right? Second session. Alright, so you still got several hours. This is a topic that we could explore more together, if you're so inclined. And if you don't take it on the first year, and you guys have been through the, the, uh, promise scholarship program, so you're familiar with this, so maybe it's the newer folks that that we can explore this together. It's a very powerful piece. Um, but yes, I'm trying to break down the myth that boards can't work with staff. It is true. I don't want you running around at all the schools and wearing your big board hat and, you know, throwing your weight around. That's not how I intend this. It's together as a board alongside your superintendent, alongside key staff. Okay, let me press on because I'm almost done. Superintendent work, board work. Blue, 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 blue. John's a little leery. This guy always tries to fool me. And it's unanimous. Yes, this is superintendent work. This is the details. It's underneath the goal. It's about specific strategies. The other way I like to say this is board, you set the strategic direction. Superintendent owns the strategic plan. That's all the detailed work. Should you know what's in the plan? Should you be giving updates on the plan? Absolutely. You don't own the plan. Superintendent owns the plan. Now, what if the plan's going this way and your strategic plan wants you to go this way? You absolutely tell the superintendent you're going in the wrong direction. You gotta align these two things. That's part of the strategic plan. Alright. Uh, I'm gonna skip through this one because I think you probably talked about KL, isn't that right? Where you talked about communication protocols and the complaint procedures. Um, yeah, you've done this piece, I think, as well. Uh, let's skip the video because you've done this piece. You may have done this one. Most of you are saying superintendent. I've got one outlier. John, why is this board work?
Because it sounds like you got the opportunity and the right to do it.
Who wants to argue against that?
I will.
Okay, I will. I'll tell them somebody must beside me.
So to check on overall staff and student morale, to observe, observe student learning in classrooms, that's very much detailed work. That's operational. That's weed's work. And for board members, we can schedule a time to have a tour and see what's happening.
That's not what the policy says. The policy says I get to go do it. And it doesn't say I have to schedule.
But you're, you're mostly right. Because this is the policy that you're referring to. This is the school. School visits by board members will be regarded as informal expressions of interest in school affairs. So it's the intent of your visit. If the intent of your visit is informal expression of interest, John's right. By your policy. I don't know what your practice is, and you may have some other things. But if it is an inspection or visit for supervisory or administrative purposes, that's not allowed unannounced. And so when we went back here, I interpret student learning, staff and student morale as being more supervisory or administrative.
And I, and I take it as, as a guy in the community whose school I am on school board for and as a member here, I'm interested in seeing if morale and everything is good here. I am casually interested in this. If I saw something that I thought was untoward, I would have to talk to somebody and the somebody would probably be Sherry, but then I would, I definitely agree.
So you, but, so we're, we're, we're gonna split hairs, and I don't mean to get us hung up on this. But, but John, if your intent really is to inspect or supervise.
No, no.
Oh, it, it is, it is because you described this to me. Because if you saw something, you would have to do and talk to your superintendent about it.
I, if I was walking on the school grounds and I saw, when I'm walking on the school grounds and I find garbage, I pick it up and I throw my garbage can. That doesn't make me the police for it. It doesn't make me the cleaner of the parking lot. I do that as part of what I do. And I think that my showing up is doing that same thing.
To, again, uh, we're splitting hairs.
No, I want to know. Are you catching what I'm saying?
I am, and I would caution every board member to consult with me, consult with Rachel before you want to start touring the schools unannounced.
Oh, I, I, I would, but I'm saying that this does not require, there is no thing in there about, John, get your ass in the office and sign in before. There's nothing.
Oh, well, no, anybody entering a school needs to sign in before you enter the school.
That's correct.
And and I would say, just because you can't, just because you can doesn't mean you shouldn't. Just because it's not laid out in the policy that you can't show up unannounced and walk around and observe teaching and progress on your own. Which I don't think we should be doing that. That sets a very odd, odd energy for those in the school. If they see a board member just coming wandering through the school, what, why are you there? What are you looking for? To me, it wouldn't, you received well.
Well, I was sitting here thinking, I think, I was sitting here thinking expressions of interest in school affairs. To me, that's going to a football game or checking out an evening activity or a before-school club. Those kinds of things to, because it's not school, it's school affairs. So for me, there's a real difference there. I do agree with Sherry that, um, showing up during a school day unannounced can be real rattling to teachers, and I'm not defending that. I'm not saying that they should feel that way, but they do. And, and so, um, it's not like anyone's worried about getting caught for doing something inappropriate. It just, it kind of ruins the the mojo or the rhythm that's in a classroom with students at times.
Well, and Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, when you were to come down here to St. Mary's, you would kind of like the staff would know you'd be coming that day.
Yes, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily give a specific time, but for me, it's part of administrative supervision to know that I'll be in the schools at least once a week.
And so they, they, their staff knows, like, she's running down, so for us to show up unannounced, that would really rattle. Rattle it, like, what's, and what's going on?
And so let me take this briefly back to where Sherry was a moment ago. John's right. It doesn't, in policy expressly require that board members come announced. But at the same time, should you versus can you, could be two different arguments. And so you do have to be a little bit careful about what Rachel brings up in terms of what's the perceived intent to be there. And I go back to what's the intent? If your intent is just, I want to know more about the schools. I'm just generally interested. That's, that's covered. But I have board members who try to use this policy to go in to dig up dirt of the superintendent.
And I would argue that if, if we as board members truly are interested in learning more about what's happening in schools, the best way to do that is to arrange ahead of time with the administrators. You can have a tour. If you're interested in a specific class, you can ask, you know, is it okay for me to observe this class during this time? And that would be more informative than, than one of us just wandering around on our own, making observations and peeking in the classrooms, which to me seems a little, and I'm just gonna use the word invasive and disruptive.
Well, and part of that also is it's not just about staff, it's about students. They don't necessarily know who any of you are. And, um, we train kids from a very early age to know who's in their building and to report when they see someone that they don't know. Uh, so that, that's a whole nother aspect to this too.
If you want a very, if you want to send a very powerful message to your staff and to your students, do it together. Walk-throughs with my board members was the highlight of each month. And because I involved the board, like I described a moment ago, working alongside teacher leaders, at least three or four times a year, they were looking at data. They were, you know, asking teachers, what can we do for you? How can we support you? And everybody knew what the district priorities were. But we had walkthroughs. About a quarter of what we're at, seven person board, but walking alongside, having conversations with those board members, even with the superintendent present, even announced, I will tell you that my teachers were tighter than type, and it took months, if not a year or so. But something very powerful is doing that together. And talking about student board as you, as you walk through. Um, again, this policy really comes down to intent. What's your intent? If you're, if you've got a good heart and you're doing this, you, you're gonna be fine. And that's where I was taking John, your comments from, was with the right intent. My concern is, what if you get a board member with the wrong intent? And that's why it's important to have this conversation. It may be have some protocols outside of what the actual policy says. And be careful. Alright, I'm gonna push this on. Uh, we're almost done here. We're not gonna watch this video, although it's really entertaining. Alright, very quickly, we got two more to do, and then we're gonna be done. Board work or superintendent work, reducing the teacher lunch breaks from forty minutes to thirty-six minutes. Everybody says superintendent. There is one circumstance where this is board work. Can you tell me the circumstance?
Contract.
Yeah.
Contract. If it's in your collective bargaining agreement, then that would have to be approved by the board. Uh, most situations would be superintendent work. Very good. Oh, here we go. I forgot I had one more. Approving an in-state overnight trip. And then I said, what about an out-of-state?
In-state is this?
In-state.
In-state is superintendent, out-of-state is board. Alright, so yes, you get to play the BS card. There you go. Alright. Yes, sir.
What delineates the two pieces of that between the superintendent? I'll have a second, but what, why?
Uh, I'm gonna ask you that question just a moment. I show you your policy. For me, there should be no difference. In, in my opinion, any field trip. Short of maybe outside the country, but in-state, out-of-state, to me, it's administrative work.
So it's our policy, I said.
We'll see, we'll see. Uh, I, I, I see this all over the board. I have some boards, my policy must approve all field trips. Why? Do you not have enough work to do? Yeah, really, no, really. Alright, let's see what you say. Out-of-state is board, in-state is superintendent.
Yeah, I thought everyone.
And again, without getting into a big, long discussion, why?
I think the level of risk seems higher for.
So you need to do all the low-risk work for the board here?
I think that has to do with expenditure of Oregon funds outside of Oregon.
Oh, it's just your policy. It doesn't have to be there. And I'm saying, uh, there's no legal requirement. What I'm saying, John, is there's no legal requirement for what you're saying.
That, that's where I was trying to.
Right, right.
That one said overnight. Is overnight listed in this?
No, it's not.
Because I guess I just thought when it's overnight, the overnight part is one of those things that I'm thinking. And it may be more costly that way in the expenditure, and that's why maybe it would need board.
But, but you set the budget. You put the big frameworks. All, all the superintendent has to do is stay within the Yeah. Right. There, there might be some good reasons, but again, what I'm trying to illustrate, and we're just gonna move on, this is probably a level of detail. Could you be informed about it? Sure.
Yeah.
But do you need to approve them? And if you ever run across a situation where there's not a board meeting for another month, but something came up, here's a real opportunity for kids, but they can't go unless you have a special board meeting? I mean, those kinds of things. So, yeah, it's to illustrate. For the most part, your policy is solid. You'll be most of that work through the superintendent.
This was read up in two thousand ten. Where's the red line between nineteen ninety and two thousand ten? Did that change? And was there a reason given? I don't know.
Right, yeah. There, there's a good twenty years difference, and who knows what changed, right? Uh, and again, Phil, if you promptly, I can send you our model policy. You can look at it someday. Um, again, it's not a bad practice. You probably don't have to spend much time on it. To me, I use it as a, uh, an example to illustrate, is that where you want to spend your time? If I could free up your time by taking away some of those duties and say, now you can spend this time talking about kids with teachers, what would you choose?
Not kids.
Yeah, every time.
Well, this is, this, this is just out of state channels, since they have a game in Washington or activity in Washington, even if it's just a day trip, it needs our approval. It's interesting.
Right.
Not even overnight.
So, so when Ma takes his, has taken his baseball team down, hasn't he gone to California before something?
Is it the baseball team or is it a baseball club?
Baseball team.
It's the, it's the, the school's baseball.
It's the school's baseball team?
Yeah.
Okay. I just noticed some places get around it by calling it a club.
No, it's, it's.
Okay. Alright, let me, let me press on because there's one really good example I want to finish up with. And there it is. Okay. Board work or superintendent? Board work or superintendent work? It depends.
In, in this, in this community, I'm thinking you better be at the board.
Okay. I got one board, two board? I got a superintendent. Okay, we're almost out of time, so there is no clear.
Trick?
It is.
BS.
It is BS. Now, John's not wrong, because what he started saying was, you know, in this community. It's so important that it must be board work. Not your words, but I think that's where you were at.
That is exactly what it is.
Okay, so, alright, so you do the unimportant work, the board's gonna do the important work. Isn't that what John says?
So important.
Alright. A criteria that it's important doesn't necessarily make it more work.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, let me tell you my situation, which is slightly different. First year superintendent, first couple of months, two very prominent boosters walked through my door. And um said, you know, Steve, the colors of the high school are black and old gold. I don't know what you had down there right now. But that, I mean, it, it needs to change. If not, we're out here. Okay, thank you very much. Uh so I looked down at my school, it looks like black and gold to me, you know? Anyway, what I did is, at a board meeting with my board, I said, listen, I've got this situation. I know in this community, it's gonna be very important, you know, I'm gonna land on whatever side of this fence. Here's how I would like to proceed. I'm not super clear that it's superintendent work. Or if it's board work. Now, I don't want to push it off on you just because it's controversial. So let's sit down, talk together, how do we decide this thing? So before I get into it, make any decisions, let's talk about whose decision it is. We went back and forth, they saw the merit in, yeah, maybe it needs to come to board, okay, Steve, you take care of it. Ultimately, what we landed on was, Steve, you go for it. It's your decision. They don't like it, they appeal it to us. So moral of my story is, and then I'll finish that story. Sometimes you gotta sit down together. It's not super clear, it's that muddy slide, right? If you've got a really good working relationship and partnership, you can have that conversation, it's gotta be in a public meeting, but. And decide who's gonna decide what the process is gonna be. So that's exactly what we did. I investigated, apparently we were uh black and Vegas gold. And realized there were so many different shades of gold, yeah, yeah, yeah. And uh and of course, white was thrown in there, which was officially nothing, alright. I mean, I had some uniforms that were black and white with a little sliver of gold. And it wasn't no gold. Ultimately, and we talked through it with the coaches in the high school, the kids, ultimately, I landed on the side of it's black and gold. I'm not changing Vegas gold, old gold, white, can be an accent color. Ultimately, the boosters were ticked off, they walked, we survived, no appeals to the board. But because of the process that I used in the end to listen as many people as I possibly could, and then came up with my decision. So sometimes you gotta sit down and figure it out together. That's, that's the moral of that story.
Yeah.
Uh this is what I referred to in the absence of policy, the superintendent can act. Now, the mascot's not the best example, cause I don't know any superintendent that says, oh, there's no policy, I get to go decide, right? And I've done this, I've done this slide so many times that the superintendent always holds up. And I don't know if you did or not, remember, always holds up the, the board card, cause I don't want to make that decision, right? I'm gonna throw that to you guys. And sometimes superintendents will do that, and sometimes boards have to gently push back and say, you know what? No, I think that's, we'll support you, and you know, this is how we can be a part of the process, but sometimes you gotta gently push back on the superintendent. Alright, uh. Covered a lot tonight, do you have any specific examples, anything you want to say? Is this board work, not board work?
I think it's valuable to go back to a real-life scenario that happened on this board. It was three, four years ago, and you, you said. Trust the judgment of the superintendent when they make hiring decisions, and also when they make. The decision to recommend dismissal, to, to recommend firing of a. Or of, you know, non-renewed contract, whatever. So we did have this happen on our board, and I think we were wrong. We did not accept the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate a teacher. And it was a big deal. We had hundreds of people in that, in that meeting. I wasn't, I, it's. I was not board chair at the time. The meeting was handled in a way that wasn't very. Disciplined or um it, it just didn't follow what we should have done in that meeting. I felt like the board wasn't prepared ahead of time to really know what we were supposed to be deciding on. Um and it, we ended up not supporting Troy. And we lost a lot of trust with our administrative team over that. So I would just say that was a real-life experience that I lived through on this board. And I voted, it was unanimous, and I was with unanimous. Um it got very emotional, it got, I mean, it's come with the news media. Um it just, it was not a great time.
So there was a recommendation to terminate or non-extension or non-renew, something like that?
It was a very popular teacher among students and parents.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and the board voted to.
To not.
To renew or extend, basically, by, by.
Because this, the, the teacher had requested an open.
Okay, so there was an appeal, so that's, okay, so there was an appeal to the superintendent's decision.
Yes.
Could have been heard in the executive session, but the teacher chose an open session, and that puts pressure on everybody.
Yes.
Cause I've been there and done that. And so in that situation, there is the role of the board. And. Your role is really more judicial and like an appellate court. You, in my coaching view, it would still, as it was with the recommendation, don't substitute your judgment for the superintendent's. Because you didn't sit through all those meetings and plans of assistance and all, all the information that led up to this recommendation. However, what you should have been schooled in and maybe were or weren't, I wasn't there.
We got very little coaching.
Got what?
We got very little of any coaching at all.
What you should have been schooled in, so from your superintendent power, man, I'm not trying to cast stones at Troy. Is the process that was used.
Yeah.
Because what you needed to do in that situation was, was there due process? Where our policies followed, where the procedures followed. So even though you don't own the procedures. You can ask those questions. So yours is one of process, and if the processes were not followed. And again, I don't know your situation, so I'm not speaking to it. Then, yes, you can reject the recommendation of the superintendent.
Retrying it, we ended up fact-finding, we ended up asking. Yeah, if, if, yeah, it went.
And, and again, I'm not casting stones at anybody in that situation, and. What a horrible place to be in terms of an open meeting and having to do all this. But your, your role there is procedural.
Yeah.
And if you find significant procedural errors, then I would say absolutely. Then overturn the recommendation of the superintendent. But if you can find none. Then I would say support the recommendation superintendent.
Sorry, you're. That's what they found, procedural errors.
Yeah.
And, and the teacher presented a great argument, and, and community members. Also stated out procedural errors. And so I think the, the board, even though it was hard. I think the board made the right recommendation.
Yeah, I agree.
Even though it was really difficult and it may have lost trust, the procedural part of that was, was not all of it. And that's, that's the tough thing that we have.
And I, I felt as a board member that I was ill-prepared to know what I should have been looking for and should have been asking and. And keeping, there should, we should, I think as a board, we should have been provided some guardrails to stay with them.
School board attorney there?
No. Um it, it just really didn't go well from, from being on the side of this table. I felt like it just did not go well. So I would, I, I would handle it very differently now than it was.
And without, one, one second, Rachel, and without retrying the case, you know what I mean? That's not really my intent. I really want to use it to illustrate the board work piece of that. Is again, not substituting your judgment, well, I really like this teacher. I'm gonna vote against the recommendation because of that, but it's really more listening, listening through the eyes of process. Where the process is following. And if you, in your opinion, they were not, then you vote to overturn. Richard.
Thank you. Uh one of the words I liked that you said was coaching. When we did our first meeting with Sarah last month, we talked about crisis communication. But the one thing that I didn't talk about with you, and we haven't had to implement, is that there is one step higher than texting you to say. Read your email, this is really important. And that could be when things are so. Sensitive that I need to call each of you personally and talk with you far in advance of the meeting. To work it through and be able to provide that coaching for you. We didn't discuss that with Sarah. But it's important for you to know that, especially with two uh newer folks on the board. That, that's something, that's part of who I am. You can expect that from me, yeah.
Yes, and. Okay. Rachel has to be very careful in her communication around personnel issues. And this is the perfect time for me to illustrate this because of your appellate. Role in this process. So there's really, in the process that you described, there's very little information that the superintendent can. Or should give you ahead of time. Because you have to be neutral.
Yeah.
And so the coaching that might come from Rachel would be around the process. However, because the superintendent is presiding one side. And the teacher or the representatives presenting theirs, I would say superintendent's gotta step back from the coaching role. Cause they're gonna present their argument, they're gonna present, you know, that you're a school board attorney. And I know it costs money and it can be costly, but in this situation, your coaching comes from the attorney.
Yeah, and, and I would just add, during that hearing, that's what it was. You know, our, our public input is very clear that we don't allow people to speak. Directly about any specific staff member. And, and that was allowed to happen. And over and over again. I just thought that it wasn't.
Right.
It could have gone better. And the decision may have been the same at the end. It would have been a more planned. And I will say disciplined process, because it really just, to me, of it, again, the side of the table, it just got really. We were going down rabbit holes, we were, at least again, this was just my perspective.
Right. Well, and sometimes the nature of how you do things.
Yes.
Builds or hurts the, the trust factor.
Yeah.
Cause again, if you do it in the right way, but you disagree, and Rachel's recommendation's not followed, but she feels like. It was done in the right way, with the right coaching, okay, I'm, I'm a big girl, I can take that, right? But when it appears to be more of, and I'm not saying this is what this was, but what I've experienced became a root cord. You know, and board members weren't listening to anybody, and they just did whatever they wanted. Yeah, I didn't walk away from that.
And I.
You did all.
And a takeaway for me, from that experience, was to be more thoughtful about when something's gonna be hard. We need to be ready for it. And so when we had a complaint filed against a board member. I was very thorough in planning for that um that meeting. And I shared the process with both the person who filed the complaint and the board member who the complaint was against, and. It went very smoothly.
Extremely well.
And that to me is just comparing and contrasting. So whoever is in the board chair seat needs to be. Doing that due diligence to make sure that those types of meetings, which are awful.
Yeah.
Proceed in a way that is better than worse. It's never great, but anyway.
And that just really illustrates the role of the board, and those situations are more procedural than they are content. And if you can just remember to not individually or collectively substitute your judgment with the superintendent's. But if there is a procedural piece that you, in question or be curious about, that is your role. Make sure your policies are followed, or not just your policies, but if there's established procedures that they're followed. Alright, we're, we're almost done here. Um I'm not even gonna take you through all that. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. That's the work we did tonight. Do you have any other situations that you want to throw out and say, is this board work or not board work? When in doubt.
I have, yes. So in, in the news, like last two days, the district down east. Fired your superintendent for not following governor's mandate. As much as we agree to disagree. School districts are required to follow those rules. How, how do they get away with that? I mean, in, in the, in the legal sense of dismissing the superintendent for not basically following what's required for them to be an operating. State-funded school district. I mean, to me, that seems a little. Overboard. I mean. That's it, that's.
And this is why. I so appreciate. Boards like you. Because when I hear that kind of stuff. It makes me want to quit my job. It was frustrating to read this.
So the superintendent was terminated by this board because they were implementing the mask mandate?
He, he was following the governor's mandate. They said, no, we don't want mask mandates, and if you're gonna implement it, you're fired, and they fired him.
Oh, no.
I thought you said it the other way around at first. Oh, wow.
Superintendent was intent on following the law.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The board said, we gave you a directive otherwise by resolution. And he said, I can't support your resolution because in my opinion violates the law. And then.
Mandate, it's not law.
What?
Violates the mandate.
Oh, it's kind of, it's at the same level of enforcement as law. But I understand your distinction.
But it, it was frustrating, Rita, it's like, you know, our, our board would, you know, we are here to follow. As much as we do or don't like what's coming down the pipe, we're here to make it work. I, I don't see how they can be justified in. And the board can take that action, has authority to take that action. They also may have brought scunion upon themselves. This is, you may have bit off more than you think you're chewing here by, by having said violate state of. Violate a regulation, a mandate, whatever you want to call it. But they do have the authority to make that level and to have the superintendent follow that. And if the superintendent didn't have a contract that went longer than that. That's how that goes. Same thing happened in Albany, what, four months ago? Three months ago?
Last, last month, last month.
Last month, yeah. Was it even there six months? It said, I do, you will do what we say or you're out.
In Albany?
Albany, right?
Yeah, well, this one.
Oh, that wasn't for violating or directing?
No, it was something different.
Yeah, that, that was a different situation.
Oh, I thought she did the uh violate the. So my question, Steve, again, was, it's just how could they, as a board, I mean, are they going to be in some kind of like legal hot water at this point? Because.
Well, I, I could be.
Yeah.
Yes, and John and I may slightly disagree here. Can the board take action to terminate the superintendent's contract? Yes, they can. In this particular contract. He, there was a no-fault termination clause of six months.
Right.
And so they can do all that, and they should have stopped at, we terminate your contract for no reason.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Now, I personally believe that they shot themselves in the foot by going on and saying, because you, you failed to follow our directive. Or John and I might disagree, but we're probably on more in common than, than not. You cannot direct me, you cannot direct, in my opinion, direct your superintendent. To violate a mandate that would put her license in jeopardy, because TSPC, if she were to follow your rule, would lose her license. So.
Doesn't the mandate also state, though, that board members can be held personally liable for advising people against?
And liable for advising people against? If it results in sickness or death.
So only if there's positive incidents.
Right. There has, there, there has to be, for any liability, then there has to be some type of loss. And so, yeah.
You have to show gross negligence, that's the board, in those decisions.
And the gross negligence would be ignoring the governor's mandate.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens here in the interim because they're going to get an interim superintendent. Is that superintendent? Going to follow that directive? Yeah?
But.
And if he does? Sorry, Adrian.
Adrian.
Adrian, yeah.
Adrian. It happened last night.
It's in your, it's in your daily, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the newsflips. It's the top article. If you missed it, it's, it's unfortunate because superintendents have been feeling that heat across the state. And this particular board, in my opinion, was just very blunt and it's, you didn't follow our directive, you're gone. I, I personally think that's going to end up costing them, well, not them, but the insurance company.
A lot of money.
A lot of money. It's a wrongful termination, even with a no-fault termination. I, I don't know. We'll see where it goes, but I, I just want to come back to you because I had this conversation with a colleague because as you know, uh, you know, Albany, Albany was sideways, their new board and their superintendent. Uh, New Bird, they've been in the news. I mean, we've had a handful of just.
Oregon City is making some interest.
Oregon City, right. So there's a handful that feels like a thousand. And what my colleague and I talked about this morning, a member of my team, we both bragged on, but you know, last week I was with, and it was a great board. And the week before that, man, it was a brand new superintendent and board. And they said exactly what John and you all agreed to here. I can separate my personal beliefs from my professional responsibilities. And I'm going to do what's best with kids, even if I've got to swallow a little bit over here and stuff that I don't believe in. To me, that's the predominant feeling in this state. What you illustrated here in the conversations that you are having, that's what I've got to remember. The Adrians of the world are the anomalies. But it feels like it's the rule and not the exception. You're taking care of kids. You're going to find ways to disagree, move forward, whether it's among yourselves or with the governor or wherever that disagreement comes from, even if it's an internal struggle. Where you can separate personal from professional responsibilities. Now, if you want to oppose the governor's mandate and do it in the right way and, and, and do that, I absolutely applaud that. We're, we're at OSBA advocating for local control. We don't like it any more than you do. At the same time, we are going to encourage you to follow the mandate. Just some really interesting times that we live in. My encouragement to you is to keep doing what you're doing. Which is that really strong focus on kids, caring about one another, listening to one another, working together. It's what I go home and concentrate on and the Adrians of the world. That's our program tonight.
Great discussion.
It was. It, it really is. I love coming here. I love being around good people and you're all good people. We have more time together. We don't have to figure that out tonight because we're almost at the end of the long term.
We have it scheduled that we can.
Do we have something scheduled? Do we have something on the calendar?
End of September, maybe?
It's the twenty eighth, twenty eighth, September twenty eighth.
Okay. Please, I, I think it's on my calendar. I know Sarah and I were doing kind of a handoff here. And be thinking about, when you've done the basics, you, you've done the, uh, the piece that qualifies you, the two-year guarantee. I mean, this is the basic stuff I want to make sure that we covered. You covered it in six hours very well. So be thinking about how you would like to spend the remaining time that you have. The only caveat is it has to be done by the first of January. Um, I know this next few weeks, you're going to get schools started and work through all that. But, um, just be thinking about where you would like to take it from here.
Does anybody have thoughts already on what? Anybody have ideas on what we want the next session to definitely include?
I really like Steve's talk about like, in the beginning, it kind of felt weird that that, that we're, we're working along with whatever our goals are with, with our staff, with our teachers, um, sitting down and, and being a part of that supportive process, um, and collaboration. I think that'd be, that'd be great.
And I would say that we have a plan for, for creating a strategic plan.
That was my question.
And we're moving ahead with that. So I don't, I'm, maybe it would help if I clarified for all of you and Andy that my leadership through this strategic plan will include having any board member be part of the process. And as we work through several months of work, the, the teams that will come together to analyze data and, and put together goals will include board members that want to be there along with classified licensed administrative, uh, community members that are taxpayers with no kids in the school. We will all be working on that together for several months. So, and that's just the beginning. So, and that will start in November.
Yeah.
Were there certain things tonight? Or even, uh, the, the first night with Sarah that really caught your attention and we talked more about, uh, that you would just like a booster in or? Conversation both evenings has been very rich.
Yes, yes.
We, we like, we tend to go deep and I like that. I like that about us.
So Rachel, if I can briefly explore a little more, you said that a strategic planning process, you have a vision for how that's, that's going to lay out and, um, board can be involved or not, and you know, should we take some of our time when we're together next for them to thoroughly understand? Not that it would take a full three hours perhaps, but you might want to take them deeper into what you're thinking in terms of the process. I'm just throwing out possible ideas.
Very happy to do that.
That's where my mind goes, but it sounds like your process uh, is, is ahead of where I thought I was going to be involved. And so I don't want to get involved in, uh, undoing your process, but I'd really like to see how that unfolds.
Because remember the strategic plan and that process belongs to the superintendent, that the board can be informed. My question to the group is, are you all clear on what the strategic direction is?
I don't think we can know until we get input from stakeholders what the direction is.
So my ten second question might be, how can you build a plan without knowing what the strategic direction is?
We can't. We need to establish the direction first and then work on building a plan, but it's going to take six to eight months to do all pieces.
Okay. All pieces. But the board's role is in creating the strategic direction before the strategic plans. Wow. And I'm really asking questions more for your reflection. I, I don't want to, you know.
That's right.
Right. In, in an ideal situation, the strategic direction is built collaboratively with the board and then that direction is taken. And the board or the superintendent creates the plan underneath that. So that's why I was asking, is everybody clear on the direction? And if not, we can talk, we can talk more about how we create that, what does that look like? And then make sure it's coordinated with what your vision is, because I'm trying not to step on your toes here. I'm really trying to talk in, in general terms.
Yeah, yeah.
And if not, if the board doesn't have a strategic direction firmly in place, then perhaps, and so this is food for thought. This is not Steve Kelly trying to imprint himself on you. Is maybe the next session, we spend part of the time, you really going through the process with the board that that sounds very collaborative and very comprehensive. So they understand what the strategic planning process is. And we can also take part of that time and talk about strategic direction.
Yes.
What an ideal model might be, and I can present that and then we can kind of compare. And, and say, okay, this is how I think these two things can fit together. So it's more of a planning, thinking as opposed to doing session. Cause I don't want to just come in here and say, well, you need to do this.
No, no, no.
Does that sound?
This is, I, I.
Okay. And I really look at Rachel because I feel like I'm really stepping on your toes.
No, I don't think so. I think it would be good for us to talk before the twenty eighth.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, certainly. Yes.
And is September twenty too soon for our next meeting?
Um, given the lifts that I have in the next couple of weeks with my tools and things like that, it would be nice if it was maybe a little bit later. Uh, because to get into topic, strategic planning is a heavy lift.
Yes, it is.
You want to do it correctly the first time. You don't get a second chance to go back and fix it. So, so I'm wondering about late October instead of like September.
Well, yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to. Yeah, my availability the last two weeks of October doesn't exist because of the listening sessions um, that I'm involved in. But let's, it's, it's a little, it's late and we're running a little bit over. I appreciate that we're having kind of a conversation, but I would suggest that Sherry, you think about this conversation. Rachel, you think about it. Let's get together and then share the rest of that with the board. But you're right, I think September, you say twenty eighth?
Pretty quick.
Given that you're really going to be focused on school for the next two or three weeks. It doesn't really settle down. So either early October or early November.
Yeah. Well, I do want to stay on track with what I proposed last month. November is when we would launch. So maybe, maybe mid-October before the last two weeks that we won't be available.
Do you know your availability? Like the weekend?
I hate to keep you so late.
No, I, I think it's just important.
No, that's okay. I mean, I just.
It's so much easier than.
Yeah, no, I, I did, I did. Uh, let me pull up real quick. I see I already have like three messages from Jill. Thank you.
You asked for each one of them.
Yes, I know. No, I'm not complaining. I'm just, I, that was more of a compliment, like this young lady's on top of it. All right, let's look at it. So there's Wednesday, the sixth. And Thursday, the fourteenth.
Does Thursday, the fourteenth work for everyone? Do they know?
Yes.
Good by me.
By me.
Andy, do you know, Andy?
I think so. It is.
Let's pencil that in then. Before, move it from September twentieth to October.
Okay. Let me. Well.
Or not.
No, 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 no. What, if our next session is really more comparing notes, talking, looking at processes, then maybe we can keep the twenty eighth. But then the fourteenth is actually doing some strategic direction work. If that's going to inform your work in November for the strategic plan.
I think before I can commit to that, I need to talk with you and we need to discuss what is maybe similar or different about our approaches.
And Steve, the last time we hired a consultant to help us create our strategic plan, you know, um, the superintendent knew what our board goals had been over and over again, year after year. And, um, we he involved stakeholders, staff, community members, or, I mean, it was a, it was a community involvement process. And the board really came in towards the end to make sure that it was on track with what, you know, what we, and, and, and he was informing us on playing things, but.
And so what I would suggest is keep both dates. Let's, Rachel, you and I, probably Sherry, talk.
Okay.
Because the more I'm thinking about this, in your strategic planning process going on, you, you may very well have opportunities for the strategic direction to come out that essentially that part of that process is work alongside the board. And then from there, the rest of it is yours.
Yeah.
Because what I heard you say there and then, but wait, because who was it that did your, um?
Jerry Colonna.
Jerry Colonna. And so very much in that whole process, because I do know Jerry's, there was a lot of info, looking at data, uh, talking with a lot of groups. And out of that came.
Including teachers and.
Right, exactly. Yeah. And, and, and board members. And out of that came probably these big district goals.
Yeah.
And then the plan was built on that. And that's what I mean by strategic direction. And so I think maybe with minor tweaking or maybe with no tweaking at all, the process that you have in your mind, there's opportunity for, or maybe already there, this strategic direction. So I think we're more alike and different, but let's keep both days. Let's compare notes.
Yeah.
And, um, and then if we eliminate one or the other, then we can do that. It's easier to put them on the calendar and work around them.
Yeah, I like that. Let's hold both dates.
Let's hold both, just in case there's something we can do on the twenty eighth that we can then do on the fourteenth that would lead into your process. It may very well be, you know what? Rachel's got it all. This is how I might suggest that the board be interjected in pieces of it. But overall, or you need to be seen as setting the strategic direction. Cause here's the other piece that's probably missing. Strategic direction belongs to the board. The plan belongs to the superintendent. So what, if they're both in your process, I want to be able to tease them out a little bit because the superintendent's going to own the plan. Or you're going to own the direction. And then I hope to help you set up what's called a monitoring plan.
Yeah.
Which is different than just hearing about the strategic plan.
Yeah, no, we, we had that.
Okay. So you guys have been schooled in all that?
Well, we had been and then COVID just.
Right, exactly. So I want to pick up from that learning from your MSP work.
Yeah.
And actually get you to implement the data you want to look at for your direction is different than what you're going to look at for your plan. Now, they might overlap, they might be similar. But what you look at board alongside staff to make sure the overall direction of the district is going the way you want. Your plan informs you on the day-to-day operations. Okay, so we'll work on that and, uh,
Yeah.
Look at that, put it on my calendar. Do you want something else?
Good.
Looks like one too.
Sure.
All right. Thank you all very much.